Mr. Mayor, it's 6:30. Are we ready to begin?
We are.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, all, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Petaluma City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, June 16, 2025. If you wish to provide a public comment on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker card there in the back of the room and bring it to our clerk who's in the front of the room. And now I'd like to invite Monica Pericchio and Martin Riverola to provide information to those who wish to participate in Spanish tonight.
Thank you and good evening. Buenas tardes. My name is Monica and I'm here with my partner of interpretation, Martin. We're here today as interpreters. Today this event will be held in Spanish or English. We'll use both languages actively so that you can choose a channel to participate in your preferred language after we've explained how the interpretation works. We're using the Zoom interpretation function. After we've finished explaining this, the interpretation function will activate. If you're connecting to your computer, you'll see an icon of the world in the lower part of your screen. If you're connecting to your tablet or phone, press the plus key and you'll see a menu that includes the option of interpreting languages. To listen to the interpretation, press the icon of the world or Interpretation of Languages and then select your language. Thank you. We're ready.
And thank you. May we have our roll call for the evening, please?
Barnacle?
Present.
Cater Thompson?
Here.
DeCarly?
Here.
Now?
Here.
Quint?
Here.
Shribs?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, a moment of silence, if you will. And I would like to note that we'll be closing tonight's meeting in memory of Earl Dossini, who was born here 96 years ago. His roots go back to the very beginnings of Petaluma and our agricultural heritage. His dairy ranch may have been in Marin, but he was all Petaluma. He was educated here and part of our fabric. He was instrumental in the Farm Credit Land Bank and helped found the Marin Agricultural Land Trust, and he is respected by all. So tonight, we'll be closing today's meeting in memory of Earl Dossini.
Mr. Mayor, it's Janice.
I'm sorry. And Councilmember Kate Thompson?
I'm sorry I didn't contact you earlier, but I'd like to also add Maureen Bettinelli to that. She's a longtime Petalumaan, great person, and it was so sad to read that she left us.
Thank you very much. We'll include that tonight. And at this point, I'll look up and down the dais and see if anyone has any alterations to the agenda as it's written tonight. And the only one I know is that we are removing item 18 from the agenda tonight, and we'll table that and bring that back at a point very soon. And with that, we'll move into the agenda as it is written. Tonight, we have several proclamations that we get to read for the evening, first of which is our Juneteenth proclamation, and we have Faith Ross, who is the Vice President of Petaluma Blacks for Community Development, and I'd like her to come to the podium while we read. Thank you, Faith. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring slaves in the Confederate Territory free, pacing the way for the passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America; and whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one-half years to June 19, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans throughout the South and Southwest United States; and whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation; and whereas June 19 has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called "Juneteenth," combining the words of June and 19, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years; and whereas Juneteenth marks our country's second Independence Day, and its historical legacy shows the value of never giving up hope in uncertain times. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby declare June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in the City of Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you to the city manager, mayor, city council, and other city officials. We appreciate and thank you for this proclamation. We had a wonderful celebration Saturday in Santa Rosa. According to the flyer, this was the 55th anniversary of the celebration in Sonoma County. I know that Mrs. Martell Perry started the celebration as she was from Texas, and Juneteenth had been celebrated there since the 1800s. Thank you for recognizing this important item and this importance of this in U.S. history. I'd really like for all of our members for PBCD, and that's who we're representing, Petaluma Blacks for Community Development, to stand. We've grown a little. Our president is here tonight, and we have some of our members and friends also joining us.
And thank you. Next, we have a proclamation in honor of our dear friend Gloria Robinson, and I'd like to invite Gloria's children. Are we here? Angela, Ron, Derek, and Resina Robinson Palmer and Gloria's granddaughter to the podium while I read the proclamation. Thank you all. And whereas Gloria Robinson, a celebrated community leader and co-founder of Petaluma Blacks for Community Development, passed away on March 22, 2025, her impacts on the City of Petaluma cannot be overstated. And whereas, born on December 3, 1941, in Miami, when the city was still racially segregated, Gloria left Florida at the age of 19 and drove cross-country to California with her fiance and other family members. Gloria and her husband, Herbert Robinson, married in San Francisco, where they resided for several years. They briefly relocated their growing family to San Rafael before settling in Petaluma in 1970. Whereas upon arriving in Petaluma, Ms. Robinson quickly became involved in local activities, building community through her son's involvements in sports and through her local church. She did this all the while pursuing her calling as a dietary supervisor at various senior living facilities. And whereas in 1977, inspired by the lack of school material on Black history and a growing Black community in Petaluma, Gloria organized a meeting to create a group to share Black history and culture. Petaluma Blacks for Community Development was formed in 1978 with the aid of several Black families, and the group has organized the annual Black History programs that continue in Petaluma to this day. And whereas Gloria had a true passion for service to her community, participation in community organizations extended to the National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's Club and the NAACP and the Petaluma Historical Library and Museum, the Petaluma Health Center, the Petaluma Parks and Recreation Department, and many other organizations in Sonoma County. Whereas in 1981, Gloria was named Woman of the Year by the local chapter of the Business and Professional Women. In 1982, she was honored as Petaluma's Citizen of the Year. Whereas her dedication to her community ran deep, Gloria remained engaged in her volunteer commitments even in her final days. Her contributions to Petaluma will be felt for generations to come. And whereas Gloria is survived by her children Eugene, Ron, Angela, and Derek, and four grandchildren, four great-grandchildren, and many other family and friends, the City of Petaluma joins them in mourning the loss of a community giant. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, and the members of the Petaluma City Council, along, do hereby declare June 16, 2025, as Gloria Robinson Day in the City of Petaluma, and encourage all citizens to recognize her contributions and impacts as a community leader. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, and other city officials, city manager. My mother loved Petaluma. This was her first home. Miami was her first home, really, but this really became her first home. And so we were talking about earlier, me and my daughter, what should we do on this day? Some things that she loved was playing bingo, if people don't gamble, also cooking, and just giving of others, just being of service to others. So thank you very much. We appreciate this proclamation in honor of our mother.
Now we move to our general public comment for the evening, and during general public comment, the public is invited to make comment on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction and that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited up to three minutes per person, and depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares totaling no more than 20 minutes. If we have more than 20 people wishing to speak, an additional time period will be heard after the last business item on the agenda. So I'd like to ask our city clerk if we received comments online prior to the meeting.
We did receive four general public comments, and at this time, I can start the 30-second clock. And so during this 30 seconds, members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to my desk if they have not already done so, and speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated, so please pause between sentences for translation.
So we have 12 public comment cards tonight for general public comment, and looking at our agenda, that moves to 90 seconds each on those. And so I asked the clerk to set the clock at 90 seconds, and I invite Ruk Sundaramurti to speak first and Jody Johnson to speak second.
Good evening. My name is Ruk Sundaramurti. This is Jaya. This is Sister Sunika. We are part of, we are Petaluma residents, and first and foremost, thank you all for doing what you do to our community. Thank you very much. Yeah. So we are part of the North Bay Hindu Center. It's called the NBHC, and we are working to, we are all working to get a place to pray for our community. Right now, we are working at, we are kind of operating at the ELM Church. Would like to thank ELM Church for providing us the space and the support and everything. And as part of the community services, we have been doing, what is known as Wellness Walk. We want to encourage, you know, community services, so we do a Wellness Walk. And this year, we are happy to celebrate an International Yoga Day, which is on the Saturday, June 21. And we are doing this at ELM Church, the time from 9:00 to 10:30. And we would like to invite the community to participate. And, you know, yoga does promote physical, mental, and spiritual benefits. It is a very good exercise, and it's relaxing. So we would like to cordially invite you all to celebrate with us, and we think you all coming and participating would enhance the occasion and also inspire community to come. So that's what we want to say. We'd like to pass this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jody Johnson.
Can we find out what time at ELM Church?
Could you repeat the day and time?
Yeah. It's, it's on June 21, 9 to 10:30. It's 9 to 10:30 at ELM Church. Yeah.
Thank you. Jody Johnson should be followed by Janice Barker.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. First, we would like to take a moment to talk about our beloved Gloria Robinson, who you honor tonight. Gloria was an unmistakable force for good and a beautiful Youngstown Mobile Park resident for many years. Gloria was so humble that many never knew all she did in every way to bring information to power and inclusiveness to communities across our county and state. Gloria was the epitome of good trouble that would benefit so many. In our lifetimes, we will always remember the mark that Gloria has made. Gloria stood for seeing and appreciating all, regardless of color, your bank account, or your position. She always merely saw you for your own value. Her strength was in her delivery, as she knew when to enlighten, as well as knowing when to protest. Most of all, Gloria was our teacher of diversity, of history, and that all are created equal under God. Gloria was a beautiful child of God, and her Christ-like attributes shone brightly in this mess of a world. We will never forget the power of Gloria Robinson for all the good she brought to our community and our Youngstown community. We are also here tonight to respond once again to false narratives regarding our mobile park residents. We are proud that we have always stated facts, verifiable facts. Certainly, our residents did not advance legal fights. The legal notices were started by the large investment groups who bought our mobile homes in secret.
Thank you. Janice Barker to be followed by Jennifer Boyle.
Good evening. The lengthy financially draining litigation has always been Petaluma Mobile Park residents standing up for existing laws, ordinances, legal closure process, senior and vulnerable family protections, and of course, standing up for their mobile homes they own. The large investment groups barraging our residents with anything and everything to drive them out, if they have the audacity to say no to gouging, harassment, intimidation, even long-term leases, is at the forefront of the reason why so much time, effort, and legal representation had to be afforded to our mobile home park residents. What can be said undoubtedly is that we are transparent about asking the city and the city council to vote in favor of these protections that are already settled law in this public setting. These investment groups are behind the scenes, trying to undermine the very laws, ordinances, vacancy control, and even long-term leases that they knew before they bought existed. Capri was hit with a new litigation, a new arbitration for 18 persons and annual increases that include the wrong increase percentage and pass-through, which is not allowable without arbitration. This is the second arbitration in one year for Capri and the sixth arbitration for Petaluma Mobile Parks from these large investment groups.
Thank you. Jennifer Boyle to be followed by Tim Portius.
This is on the heels of the previous arbitration at Capri that still has residents paying overcharges, and most notably, the increase placed into a permanent ground rent and not the pass-through it was with beginning date and an end date. Littlewoods, still reeling from no parking and now about to go through a relocation report while trying to navigate the horror happening in our world. These residents have two appeal processes to fund in standing up to the rightful arbitrator decisions. Youngstown is grateful that the lawsuit from the people of California and the City of Petaluma against Youngstown owners, Fannie Mae, which is their mortgage leader, lender, rather, and dose 1 through 50 for blazing disregard of the senior park overlay and selling. I think that's all I am seeing here. I'm wasting my time. Selling as all age, as an all-aged park company, complete with leases.
Thank you. Tim Portius to be followed by Angie Cruz.
Complete with leases, purchase agreements, and fake rules stating all age has taken a legal turn with Fannie Mae now cross-suing the owners of Youngstown for breach of contract, threat of foreclosure, and even more. It is so important to note that Youngstown's selling of park-owned properties to all ages and as an all-age park were willful, as they had in their possession the senior park overlay zoning clearly stating their criteria needed to be met in these sales. City, community, and fellow mobile park residents in all cities and counties, we stand up for our rights and for yours, too. Greed influences every part of our lives and, if not us, too. And if not us, then greed will become the cornerstone to the death of affordable housing here in Petaluma, our own affordable housing. Thank you for allowing us to lend our voices to the transparency of our reality and not let the false narratives go unanswered. It does not surprise our residents that our city listens and supports justice for all. That's why we choose to live here. We certainly feel seen and heard as equal contributors to our community. Petaluma residents united strong. We are also here tonight to respond once again. Okay.
Thank you. Angie Cruz to be followed by Nina Zito. She's not here. We'll move right to Nina Zito, to be followed by Sandra Shan.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is sooner than I thought. We start in the clock? There we go. Tick, tick, tick. I want to express appreciation and a measure of frustration. My appreciation is for this forum, and my frustration is having a way to address appropriate channels of communication. There's been so many interesting meetings, Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, Bicycle Folks, this and that, and they keep getting canceled, and I don't want to, like, open a fire hose on very high level, as I think the expression is among you council types. But I need a way into meetings, and I'd like to suggest that perhaps a standardized for method be adopted such that, you know what, you can only cancel two meetings a year, or something. Likewise, I'd like to encourage that you consider doing a Citizens' Academy, much in the way that our police department has or the county of Sonoma has, just to acquaint citizens with protocol and like Robert's Rules and all this tiresome stuff that actually gets things done, and you experts and your city clerk and all know how to do that. So thank you for considering that. And like, the meetings keep getting canceled, right? Not working. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Shan, to be followed by Catherine Babowski.
These are not my words. I am reading portions to you of a book review of a new bestseller called "One Day." "One Day," everyone will always have been against this, is the full title. It's a book about the war on Gaza, powerful, compelling in its moral logic. It's the anguish cry of a U.S. citizen who has followed the war on Gaza and looked at the horrors from afar and couldn't remain silent about the West's complicity in the carnage, our complicity. Though the author condemns Hamas for its massacre of 1,200 Israelis on October 7, 2023, he characterizes the response as eye-opening proof that the humanist ideals championed by the West have always been lies. "One Day" asks us to face the realities of Western support for Israel's indiscriminate war: children mutilated, starved to death, cities razed, thousands of noncombatants dead, most of the region's 2.2 million residents displaced. He's asking us to demand an end to the violence, arguing that to remain silent is to fail not only the war's direct victims, but our own soul as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Babowski to be followed by Hannah Stewart.
Yes, my name is Catherine Babowski. I live at the Littlewoods Villa Mobile Home Park at 1821 Lakeville Highway Space 31. First, I want to say this Gloria Robinson, she was a great lady, great person. And also, too, Harmony is illegally breaking all the laws at the Littlewoods. Their onsite park manager doesn't include all the vandalism that this onsite park manager's family, her friends have already passed on to my mobile home in the past. And also, too, her family, they park on the fire lanes all hours, all day, all night. But when someone parks on the fire lane for two seconds, just to unload their groceries, she's banging on their door right away. That's not right. They park there all day, all night, blocking the fire lanes. Emergency vehicles have to get in to save people's lives. And also, too, Harmony did not give all the residents closure of the park. They didn't give it to the onsite park manager, her friends, and her family at all. This is illegal. They're breaking all the laws. They're stealing mobile homes that they don't own, don't have title to, and they're breaking the law and getting away with it. Something has to be done and put a stop to it immediately, right now. They're terrorists. They're liars. They're crooks, and they've been doing all kinds of stuff statewide. Please put a stop to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Stewart to be followed by Chantel Rogers.
Hello, city council. I'm a resident of Littlewoods. I just wanted to let you guys know. To the city council members and legal team, I appreciate your continued vigilance in making sure that Petaluma is a welcoming, safe place for your constituents, some of whom have lived, voted, and supported the economy and the community for decades. I just want to make this part quick. I just would like to go ahead and quote Sarah Grimke, a notable abolitionist and women's equality activist, and also later Ruth Bader Ginsburg. equality activist, and also later Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I ask no favor. All I ask of our brethren is that they take their feet from off our necks. Thank you for helping us to pry Mr. Uvalde's feet from our necks.
Thank you. Chantel Rogers to be followed by Daniel O. Hernandez.
We've only begun to see the financial repercussions of defunding, cutbacks, layoffs, and this administration's vindictive attitude towards California. Already, it's hit the museum where I was happy to see the city step up to offer matching funds on their fundraising drive to replace what will no longer be receiving from the feds. Relief Petaluma lost their young workers. School gardens have been defunded and the Redwood Empire Food Bank has lost $1 million in food support. Cots and Catholic charities have lost fundings. On the chopping block, our school lunches, meals on wheels, food stamps, homeless services, and heat puberty support. HUD is likely to be affected, impacting PEP housing and low income and subsidized housing. Medicaid is already slated to be scaled back in California, and further cuts in eligibility will put extreme pressure on local hospitals like Petaluma Valley Hospital. When the next fires come, which they will, FEMA may not be around to help anyone affected. Social Security, we just don't know. Our safety net is being dismantled before our eyes. Our immigrant community faces all of these issues in addition to ongoing threat of ICE and deportation. What will we do when faced with hungry children, vulnerable seniors, and families on the brink of homelessness? Losing grant money for projects is just beginning, the beginning of Petaluma's financial hardships. So you can either continue with business as usual, spending as you go, and dealing with funding shortcomings, or you can look at what the next three and a half remaining years of this current administration will bring and pull back on non-urgent expenditures so you're capable of being of assistance when your constituents really need you.
Thank you. Daniel Hernandez, I know you had asked to speak on item eighteen, which is removed. So if you wish to speak now, it's that moment.
Hello, everyone. I'm very proud to be a Petaluma. Gloria Robinson makes me even prouder and also makes me even prouder to be a mobile home resident. Last I checked, I, when somebody breaks the law, there's consequences. And it feels like people that owns the mobile home parks in Petaluma keep on breaking the law and stepping on our rights, and there's no consequences. And I I'm not here to judge why you're delaying item number eighteen, but you should stop doing that and take care of it as soon as possible. It brings a lot of stress to adults, but I can only imagine what kind of stress it brings to the seniors. And the way I was raised, when somebody messes with kids or seniors, you put on your warrior hat and go fight for them. So that's what I expect from the city of Petaluma. I'd like to thank you because I know you have, but the job is not done. So please, thank you.
Thank you. And that closes public comments, and I guess we probably all couldn't agree more that the situation's not over and needs to be addressed rapidly. So thank you to those who want to take a minute to depart now. We'll give a little rest of red air. Speaker Sherr. Okay. Okay. So now we move to council comments, and I'd like to start to my left here with our council member Shribbs tonight.
Okay, so I attended the North Bay Watershed Association meeting, and it was, this is the year of 25 year celebration. I think we've been participating all that time, if not most of it, in supporting that group of folks getting together for the North Bay. And the talk was from a regional folks about the sea level rise and how the city, regionally, not just the city, we're working on sea level rise here in the city, but we're going to have to join in with others for a regional plan as well as a city plan. And so that's going to be one of the organizations that hopefully can get a regional basis going so we're all working together as a team, one team. There is some small grants that we're going to be looking at shortly, but there was lots of applications for our small grant program in there, including a couple from Petaluma. So I'll be on that committee later this week, working through those grants, see what we want to do. The Climate Commission is working on lots of ideas and projects in various ad hoc groups. And then we decided that we need to start putting together a report that'll come back to us here. That's what we're going to do on next month is try to get a full report going on all the ideas that have been generated. And then I just want to support that, as I said, violence around the world is happening. We've we've got Sudan, Ukraine, Gaza, now Iran, Israel, Syria, that's still working on it, and even now, India and Pakistan are going at it. And now we even have things happening here in the U.S. So yeah, end of violence everywhere would be really nice. So I would support all of that. Anyway, that's my report right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Quint.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'd like to recognize the outsized contributions of Gloria Robinson on our community. I'd also like to recognize the citizens of Petaluma for showing up over the weekend and keeping their protests peaceful and respectful. I'd like to recognize our police department for how they handled the protest in such a professional manner. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Karen Now for being part of the 2025 Petaluma Leadership Class. Congratulations. And I'll be at the Fairgrounds Dunk Tank on Friday at 3:30. And I invite all Petalumans to come and try to dunk me for a good cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCarly.
First off, want to wish all the fathers a Happy Belated Father's Day from yesterday. And the only update that I've really got is from the Airport Commission. I will say that this Saturday, the 21st, they're going to have a big fly-in. This is not the normal display day that they do, but this is going to be a little bit more, a lot of visiting aircraft from people that were awesome enough to come out, spend the day in Petaluma. There's going to be some really cool ones there. And this is also a great opportunity, if you can go, to go support local businesses like the Two Niner Diner. And if the day excites you enough, you can go get your pilot's license. We have a local pilot school there, too. Maybe you'll see on the ramp next year. I do want to share some frustration from the commissioners on the Airport Commission. You know, over a couple of years ago, there was an airplane accident out there that went into one of the hangars, and that is, it's in process, but it's still not done. Making repairs to those hangars and I'll echo one of the comments from a commissioner who said, had it been City Hall, it would have been fixed the next week. So I'm hopeful that the city can continue to, you know, get that fixed. They worry about it when pilots come in to visit, it's the first thing that they see. So hopefully that can get fixed, and hopefully everybody has a good Saturday out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnicle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one update. We had our Sonoma Clean Power Meeting, and the most notable thing that came out of that is the board voted to offer to expand service to Lake County, Lakeport, and Clear Lake. It's roughly, like, the whole area is roughly the city of, like, the size of the city of Petaluma. But we did the feasibility analysis, and it looks good. All three of the jurisdictions out there have requested the feasibility analysis and interest in joining. And it's really, it's, not only is it exciting to be expanding out there, but it's like a really ripe opportunity for us as a, as an organization because of our focus on geothermal, and they just have a huge geothermal resource, and so there's a lot of opportunity to create some really good jobs and partner with the local agencies. So that was the exciting thing. It's still a ways to go. As soon as we'd see power turned on out there would probably be like 2027, but it was an exciting, exciting topic, and the board was unanimous in its decision. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kate Thompson.
Thank you. I had my Sonoma County Transportation Climate Action meeting, and, you know, the discussion was about our budget and projects coming forward, and of course, we're all concerned if money's going to be clawed back. And so the concerns that were stated today with what's happening with funding is a concern for all of these, whether it's food or transportation, we're just really concerned. I have my SMART budget meeting this Wednesday, this Thursday, and so I'll report back on that next week, but SMART is also looking at extending our tax. And so that, they're going to actually go the route of gathering signatures, so you'll have to have a lesser of a threshold to pass. But on Friday, Windsor's grand opening for their SMART station, and there was 1,100 people that showed up. It was a great event. SMART does a great job of putting an event on, but the whole town came out, not the whole town, but a lot of people in the town came out. And if you've never been to Windsor, you can now take the train there and then walk around and check it out. And let's see what else. And then, of course, we had our march, and it was great. I'm just going to, what Councilmember Quint said, I agree with everything that he said. And I do want to just thank our police department for job well done, but also the organizers who put it together. It was pretty amazing, what, 3,000 people, maybe 3,500 people? That was a lot of people, and it was great. And I also want to just remind people that Sunday was another day. And so you might walk, march on a Saturday, but we can't forget what's going on, and it's continuing. And then the other thing is, I just want to mention about the Petaluma School Leaders' Calls Man's Threat to Execute District Officials Over Flying Pride Flag Disheartening. Disheartening is not the word that I would have used. It is, it's scary because what happened in Wisconsin can happen in Petaluma. And so we all have to be real vigil in what we're doing and how we're treating each other, whether it's on social media. It's dangerous, and people need to understand where the danger is coming from, because I certainly know where it's coming from. And I think it's important that people pull back a little bit and maybe ask their friends to pull back a little bit. And as far as the fair, there is no dunk tank for me.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no liaison report tonight, but I did attend a few graduations and at a few different schools at a few different ages. Our future is bright with these graduates, and I wanted to wish them all the best of luck as they navigate through life. And thank you to Councilmember Quint for acknowledging my leadership graduation. If you haven't taken the leadership class through the Chamber of Commerce, I highly recommend it. It was the best year to learning more about the city than I thought I knew everything. I did attend the Hayden Clementoff Tournament at the New Communities Sports Fields out on Washington Street. The Parks Department did a wonderful job, Public Works did a wonderful job, but they would like the purple pipes connected to the plants out there so they don't have to hand water with 50 gallon buckets of water. A shout out to our city staff and Petaluma Fire Department for yesterday's escort of the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society Festival and Parade from St. Vincent's. I attended the mass with my parents, and I was very proud of the, how the city came together to escort them from the church to the high school. I hope to see everyone at the Petaluma Fair this week, and I want to wish the 4H and FFA members the best of luck as they compete for those blue rubens in all categories. And by the way, I'll be in the dunk tank on Friday night raising funds for MICA's HUGS nonprofit. So come out and find me, but I'll also volunteering to greet on Thursday and Friday at the entrance of the fair. So I can't wait for the fair to start, so see you there.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think the fair is going to be all hands on deck for the city, from all the work the staff's putting in and our nonprofits are putting in to pull it together, and then all the council, that's going to be in dunk tanks different nights and greeting different nights. So go Petaluma. I just want to note that the No Kings protest we saw this weekend was a huge crowd in Petaluma, and I appreciate that, for the most part, everyone involved respected the rights of each other and the need for public safety. And so I want to thank the organizers for their calming efforts, and I want to thank the impacted public for their patience, patience, and I want to thank the police department for their balance in handling what can be a difficult situation. I did have a chance, I get invited to a group meeting with the CEO of PG&E, and perhaps it was marketing, but they were pushing hard that they have the electricity for our decarbonization of our world, and the missing piece is the battery sector, so they were pushing strong on that. And I also attended a meeting of the Joint Mayors and Councils of Sonoma County where we heard from Robert Eiler of Sonoma State, a keynote speaker, who cautioned us about the economic prospects in Sonoma County over the next year or two, particularly in regards to jobs, tax revenue, home prices, inflation. It was a downer news thing. And then I got to speak at the Home First Landlords Recruitment Initiative event. The city is helping fund finding housing, permanent supportive housing for our formerly homeless folks. You have to come off the street to one level of housing and move to the next level and move to the, it's a continuum. And so the work that these landlords are doing and putting people in housing is really impressive, and the work that Home First is doing is impressive. Our new point in time count, count of how many homeless folks we have in Petaluma should be out soon. It'll show decrease, which shows the good work that the city's doing. I also spoke at Leadership Petaluma and, you know, again, wishing to congratulate. I think we go to a lot of the same meetings, and so congratulate our Vice Mayor for taking that course. And if you do want to know how things work in Petaluma, if you want to have a course that helps you understand all the parts and pieces coming together, that's that course. So please sign up. And with the Windsor train station opening, it's fun to see the commitment they have to getting to Heelsburg. I mean, this is a system that is continuing to grow, so that was very impressive. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to our city manager for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as an FYI, Councilmember DeCarly and the rest of council, a hangar repair is out to bid, so we're expecting to get that project underway. And the fair, as we, as you all mentioned, it's going to run from Thursday through Sunday. Avoid the lines and purchase your tickets online. Day of the fair, you can purchase it also at the gate, and you can also get a four day all access pass for $55, so it's a great deal. And full list of vendors, activities, and more can be found at our website at cityofpetaluma.org/fair. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. That moves us to our consent calendar for the evening, and I'd like to look up and down the dais and see if there's anyone who wishes to discuss one of the items separately or has a question. Councilmember DeCarly.
I'd like to pull item fifteen, please.
Okay. And seeing no other requests or questions or comments, we'll now go to the public for public comment on all seventeen items. And I'd like to ask the clerk to read our messaging for public comment on consent calendar.
We did not receive any comments ahead of times on the consent calendar, but members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
And it appears we have no public speakers for the consent calendars, so that closes public comment on the consent calendar for the evening. I'd like you to bring back to the dais and invite Councilmember DeCarly to lead off with item fifteen.
So I have a couple concerns about it, if you want to speak to it. So this, this is to update the CPSP and our SMART code, correct?
Correct.
For these grants? Okay. And then I'm curious, how does, why are we seeking grant money to update this prior to the new general plan being laid out?
Great question. So it is scope to tie, so you can look at it as implementation of the general plan. So it's a two-year project. The timing is, is actually perfect. So we're about a year away from adopting a new general plan, and so this will dovetail nicely to line up the SMART code with the general plan.
And what sort of public engagement do you expect to do for this?
Yeah, I mean, so similar to any planning process. Yeah, I mean, so similar to any planning process. I mean, what's nice is we're going to tier off the general plan engagement. So there's been a lot of robust discussion. We're looking to kick it off with some just engagement on what I think is the crown jewel. It's the SMART parcel. That's the one that comes up essentially every, every meeting, what to do about the SMART-owned parcel in front of our train station. So I think there's a lot of really SMART ideas that the community has to help envision what that looks like, try to get something going on that site.
But if we're working on land use, like tonight, for example, and have been in developing the general plan, why then get grant money to continue to develop that or change that after we've already rolled it out and been discussing it for so long?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, well, so we either use this grant money, or we have to use our own general fund money. So we have a new general plan. SMART code hasn't been updated in 20-plus years, and so there's an inconsistency with the SMART code and what we expect to be a very different general plan. And so this staff identified a funding source that doesn't impact our general fund. So I think it's a, it's an incredible opportunity for us to not use general fund to get something done.
And is the goal of it to, is it really just to increase density? Because we've been discussing that already. So I'm not sure why another $1 million plus is needed to keep that discussion going.
Yeah. So there's the difference, so I think we've been talking about the difference between general plan and zoning code. What is unique here in our city is we have essentially two zoning codes. So in the budget that council unanimously adopted, there is budget for our department, for our city to move forward to update the zoning code. Now, that covers roughly 80, I'd say 80% of the city and their zoning. The 20% sits in the SMART code. And so for us to update the general plan, update the zoning code, and then not touch the SMART code, you're sort of missing a key ingredient. And you're left with an inconsistent implementation of a new general plan. So this is actually pretty key. And we're grateful for MTC to have us, give us this opportunity, which otherwise we would be looking to use our general fund money.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Can we get a motion on item 15? Or a question? Are there other questions?
Yeah, just to clarify too, right now, our zoning code is sort of what would happen if we did, because the alternative of like using our general fund money is that we just actually don't implement our general plan where the SMART code is, right? Which is kind of what we have right now with our zoning code. Am I right?
Correct.
Right. So we have, our zoning code right now is like 40 years old, even though our general plan is like 20 years old, because we never had the funds to actually implement the general plan. Correct?
That's correct. So we do have, we've done some light touches to the zoning code, but it is, I think we've talked about it a number of times from a staff implementation perspective, from a business perspective, that we do need to take a look at the zoning code. Actually, this morning, I got the draft scope and RFP from staff for me to review. And so we're looking forward to getting that to Planning Commission in the next month.
Right. Yes, I'm just emphasizing, like, it's really important we actually take this step to implement the zoning code, or else it's inconsistent. And then there's a whole mess of weird interpretations that, I mean, I've seen since I've been involved in this, involved in the city work. So strongly in support of it. And I'll move the item.
I'll second that.
Also, Council, if I could just briefly add, under current law, with all the new and rapidly evolving, and I think continuing new state housing laws that have been reducing municipal oversight of the planning and land use process, inconsistencies between the general plan and the zoning really create vulnerabilities and potential liability for the city and hamper even more our ability to control how development approvals proceed consistent with the council's policies and direction. Thanks.
So we have a motion from Barnacle and a second from Cater Thompson. And I would like to comment that I would like, I appreciate this grant in that it puts more public process, get the public to meetings to see more of what could or what they wish to see done. So I think it's a nice added step to focus more public process on the potential growth in Petaluma. So with that, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
No.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we're looking for a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Cater Thompson.
I'll second.
Second by now for items, what is that, 1 through 17 less 15? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And remembering that item 18 has been pulled, and that moves us into Public Hearings and Matters for Consideration, number 19. It's Appointment of Individuals to City Committees and Commissions. And I'd like to, well, before I pass it to our clerk, Caitlin Corey, to, Corley, to read this. This is a time when we get to appoint new folks to commissions, committees. All too often, we forget to say farewell and thank you for all those who have worked on the commissions, who are retiring off, and tonight are mostly nameless. So to all those folks who are coming off commissions or who've been on commissions in the past, we appreciate your service very much. And the item is yours, Caitlin.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Let me share my screen. So I just have a quick presentation before we move into the vote. Wanted to give some background on the item. This is our annual appointment process for our CCBs, and we do this every year in the spring, anticipating the new terms beginning in July. So this year, we had 30 open seats to fill, which were 28 terms ending as usual, and actually only two vacant seats for folks who had left early, which is great. The recruitment ran for roughly six weeks, from April 14th to May 29th. We had 55 applicants. I did want to note that we had three late applicants and one late applicant that was due to some technology failure. Those were attached as attachment number five in the packet. And those applicants are listed on the voting slides. The three late applicants are in gray, and the one applicant that was late due to some technology failure is just listed on the main list. We also had some applicants who are already serving on a different CCB or who expressed interest in multiple. And I just wanted to note that this would not violate the doctrine of incompatibility, as these bodies are advisory and solely provide recommendations to council's final approval. So council could choose to appoint an applicant that is already serving on a CCB to serve on a different one or to serve on multiple. In terms of outreach, we did advertisements in the Argus and the Press Democrat. Our comms team pushed out some excellent social media posts. We had announcements in our community update, the website, during city manager comments. We also pushed out the flyer at city facilities, reached out to past applicants, and reached out to our community groups to encourage applicants. And of course, city council really helps spread the word. So thank you to you guys. And so I'm going to pause here to allow for council questions and for the mayor to open the public comment, but I'll be back with the voting slides.
Thank you very much. Back up to council, any, I'm going to read through the voting rules in a heartbeat here after public comment, but any other questions on the applicant process? Good. And I guess we should identify that if, well, in terms of what's late and what's a factor for late.
Yes, I can cover that. When we get to each one, I'll mention it.
And more broadly, I think while the council has a discretion to allow for late applicants, it's been our practice not to really allow for an applicant to come in after deadline. Administratively, if something is in, but it's not received, it's not processed in time, that's the one that's trickier for us, because the applicant believes they're in. And so I think council has more latitude and generally is more favorable to that, to being receptive to that applicant. And I'll leave it to you to explain which is which as we go through the voting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. And with that, we'll go to public comment. Have we had any outside email from this?
We did. We received three public comments on this item ahead of the meeting. And I think we have a few cards on this item, but if anyone else would like to make a comment, now is the moment to bring a card up.
So I'd like to invite Nicola Frye, to be followed by Adam Shelton.
Thank you. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to be considered once again for the position on the Senior Advisory Committee. Over the past two years, I have been deeply honored to lead this dedicated group in its mission to address the needs of seniors, active adults, and individuals with disability. This experience has strengthened my understanding of the challenges we all face and reinforced my commitment to advocating for the well-being of the members of all marginalized Petaluma communities. If given the chance to continue serving, I will bring the same passion, leadership, and dedication to furthering the committee's impactful work. At the same time, I feel it is important to share why I have withdrawn my application to consider serving on the Planning Commission. As many of you know, I live with a disability, and in recent months, have had to reassess my physical capabilities. When I first joined the Planning Commission, there were discussions about improving accessibility to dais and whether through a ramp, grab bars, and possibly a more accommodating chair. Unfortunately, these changes were never implemented, even though I asked for many meetings about it. During my last meeting up there, it became clear that I could no longer safely navigate the stairs to access my, access my seat or the restroom during breaks. Accessibility is not a courtesy. It is a right protected on the Americans with Disabilities Act. While I have often hesitated to voice my own needs, I believe it is essential to advocate for future members with disabilities, whether related to mobility, vision, hearing, cognitive, or other challenges. So they do not have to face the same difficult choice that I've had to make, to step away from a civic participation due to physical barrier. Please know that this decision does not come easy and does not diminish my dedication to our wonderful community. I will continue to attend meetings, share my perspective, and advocate for inclusivity for all, even if only from the audience. Finally, I want to express my deepest gratitude for your belief in me and for the opportunity to serve previously on the Planning Commission. Your support has been a great deal, and I hope to keep contributing in ways that align with both my abilities and our shared commitment to an accessible, inclusive community for all Petalumans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adam Shelton, to be followed by Harold Mattson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, members of the staff. My name is Adam Shelton, or this evening, technology failure, maybe, is what I'll be referred to. Thank you for the brief opportunity to introduce myself. I have applied for the Planning Commission. I am a 20-plus-year active-duty member of the United States Coast Guard, which I continue to serve out at our training center in Two Rock. That propensity, passion, and dedication for service has led me to apply for the Planning Commission, amongst other commissions and committees. If given the opportunity, I look forward to the work ahead. Again, that propensity for service is one that I would like to sort of narrow the aperture and localize, if you will. My wife and I have been a part of this community off and on since 2003. Most recently, we have lived here six out of the past seven years, and no plans to leave this go-round. Looking forward to, again, the work ahead if given the opportunity. Again, I'll be brief. I know we've got a lot of folks that want to speak. So again, thank you for the opportunity and the chance to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold Mattson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. My name is Harold Mattson, and I am asking your support for the Historic Preservation Committee. I am a fourth-generation resident of Petaluma. My great-great-grandfather came here in the 1860s. My grandfather around 1900. My father was born here on a property on Eli Road, which is now Fox Hollow Playground in 1914. My great-grandfather was a farmer, ultimately moved down the street to another ranch, which was ultimately sold and became Cater Farms. I have served on numerous committees and civil, civic organizations. I'm a life member of the Odd Fellows Lodge, acting as a consultant in the history of the Lodge right now as they do their restoration. I'm a 28-year member of the Native Sons of the Golden West, where I have served on the Historic Preservation Committee there. And in that capacity, we identify and honor by placing plaques on historic buildings in and around Petaluma. The Native Sons does it all over the state. My job is in Petaluma. We've done places such as the Petaluma Train Station. We did the Burdell Building. We have on the agenda right now the Odd Fellows Building, and it's completed their restoration. We're going to honor the business of Rex Hardware, which began as Rex and Mercantile in 1909. And we're going to reach out to Penn Grove, the Penn Grove Social Fireman. I'm very interested in preserving these things and identifying and honoring the history of Petaluma. So I, again, I ask for your support, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker from public comments. So we will close public comment, and I'd like to invite our city attorney to weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I just wanted to note in response to Ms. Frye's comments, it's absolutely true that the Americans with Disabilities Act and the state version of that, the Fair Employment and Housing Act, obligates us to work to reasonably accommodate folks who have, who need those accommodations. And it's, and it's really not at all our practice, because it's not inconsistent, it's not consistent with those responsibilities for someone to be faced with a choice of participating in civic life in Petaluma or being accommodated. So, just so that the council knows that we are committed to that, and we certainly encourage people to let us know when we need to use the, we have a number of different ways we can do that. Every situation is unique. But even, even in terms of, there's AG opinions concerning our options on the Brown Act to do that, to facilitate legislative body members' participation when they need accommodations, et cetera. So just for information for the council and the community. Thank you.
I think that was a rather disturbing comment. I appreciate you addressing it, and I'm sure we'll hear more on how we're addressing it, how we're considering it further as we go forward. All right, and we're back to clerk for...
Yes, so I will bring up the slides, and we can go through each, each CCB.
So let's go through the rules.
Oh, sure.
That'd be... That'd be my rule here. So the couple of procedural rules we want to make clear to everybody, and one of them is it takes four votes, it takes a council majority to be appointed. Next rule is we've all submitted our draft, our first round information to the clerk, who will display those results and then ask if that is in fact representative of people's actual votes and/or if someone needs to make a change. And from that, that will be our first pass at everything at that moment. Any seats that are not resolved in that moment will come forward for an independent vote after that, and we'll consider one committee commission at a time following that. And obviously, council votes for the number of open seats there are, or not. You need not vote for everything. If you don't feel there's a qualified or someone you choose to select, it is not incumbent on you to vote for every space. And then if there is a tie on a vote, we'll do another round and sort the tie out. If no applicant receives a majority, we'll do a second round with only those who received votes in the first round. And in the case of longer seats, shorter seats, a two-year term, four-year term, the applicant with the largest vote total will get the longer seat, more tenured seat, and the other will get the shorter seat. And if there's a tie between two seats of dissimilar length, then we'll do another round of voting and sort out who gets the long seat and who gets the short seat. I think those are the process parts of this, and so let's go to the presentation.
Okay, there we go. So we'll start with the Airport Commission. There are two regular four-year terms, and then there's the one Petaluma Area Pilots' Association term, which is one year. And I'll just read through the applicants. They are Michael Brewer, Drew Butchley, apologies if I mispronounce these, Anna Dietrich, Marcus Margand, Noel Norton, and Colin Perry, applied for the PAPREP position. These are the initial votes that council turned in. This is an opportunity to change your votes or make any changes, but if not, we did have three people who received majority council vote. They're highlighted in green. Any changes?
Is there any changes? Are we adopting with no comment? We are on to the next one. Thank you.
Okay, so just to confirm, that's Anna Dietrich, Marcus Margand for the two longer terms, and Colin Perry for the shorter term. And the next position is the Groundwater Sustainability Advisory Committee. It's one member for a two-year term, and the applicants were Robert Izzo and Sean Phillips. And it is unanimous for Robert Izzo, unless anyone has any changes? Okay, looks like no changes. I'll move on to the next. This is for Historic and Cultural Preservation Committee. There are two regular members and one Petaluma Museum Association member. The applicants are Caroline Hall, Harold Mattson, Julia McMichael, Ally Squirrel, Samantha Vance. And these last three in orange are actually those who listed HCPC as their second choice. So that's Kevin Akers, Sarah Ebner, and Michael Super. This is the initial votes from council, so unless anyone has any changes, three people did receive majority votes, and that would be Caroline Hall for the PMA rep, Julia McMichael and Ally Squirrel for the other two seats. If this looks okay to everyone, or any changes?
All right.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next. Measure U Oversight. We have three regular members for four-year terms. The applicants are Jack Byrne, Carrie Davison, Leland Fishman, Aria Nielsen, and Tyler Terrell. And based on the initial votes, we do have three people who received council majority, which would be Jack Byrne, Carrie Davison, and Leland Fishman. Are there any changes?
Looks good.
Okay. And we will move on to the next, which is Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. The applicants, there's only one seat for this, and the applicants are Robert Bailey, Genevieve Farr, David Felix, DJ Gacker, David Horning, Aaron Prentice, Christopher Smith. And second choices for the following applicants were Brian Goldman, PJ Lang, Harold Mattson, Aria Nielsen, and Adam Shelton. There was council majority for David Felix. If that looks good, no changes? Okay. Next up is Planning Commission. Three regular members for four-year terms. The applicants are Sarah Ebner, Brian Goldman, Wee Ho, Baxter Martin, John Mills, Keith Shilt, Lee Hua Stewart, Adam Shelton, and for second choice, Robert Izzo, Ally Squirrel, Tyler Terrell. And there is council majority for three applicants. Those would be Sarah Ebner, Brian Goldman, and Keith Shilt. So if there's no changes? Okay.
Nope, looking good so far.
This has been very smooth. Okay, Public Art. Here's one we will have to have a vote. Public Art Committee. There's two regular members for four-year terms and one regular member for a shorter vacated term. The applicants are Kevin Akers, Cody Chisholm, Cheryl Calderon, Laura Holmes, Ashley Kellerman, Darcy Laramore Arenas, Barbara Mays, Brianna Weaver, Julia McMichael, and Adam Shelton are second choice. We do have some folks who received majority, which would be Cody Chisholm and Cheryl Calderon. We will need to take an additional vote, I believe, for the vacated term.
Well, let's check if anybody, if this reflects their preferences. Because I'm going to change my preference.
Okay.
And I'm going to move my Laura Holmes vote to Brianna Weaver.
Ah-ha. Okay, and so we have council majority for Brianna Weaver for the shorter vacated term, if that works? Okay, let me just mark that. So Cody Chisholm, Cheryl Calderon will have the longer terms, the two regular four-year terms, and Brianna Weaver will be the vacated term. And moving on to Recreation, Music, and Parks Commission. The applicants are Jose Alaguer Allegre, Stacy Earl, Brenda Garcia, Daniel Rodriguez, Michael Super, and for second choice, Michael Brewer, David Horning, Baxter Martin, Genevieve Farr, Leslie Frushy, Christopher Smith, and Adam Shelton. There is council majority for Stacy Earl and Brenda Garcia. It looks like we will need to take another vote on the third seat, unless anyone has any changes they'd like to make.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnacle?
I'll change mine to Jose Allegre.
Christopher Smith vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then we have council majority for three. So those, let me just highlight this. So Jose Allegre, Stacy Earl, and Brenda Garcia will be appointed to those three seats. Thank you. Senior Advisory Committee. We have quite a few seats available here. There are four regular seats for two-year terms, and then one member for a vacated term, a shorter term. We actually have council majority for six people. I will note that Kathy, well, let me read the applicants first. Lydia Aslan, Nicola Frye, Don Foreman, Kathy Myers. And for second choice, it was Gail Abrams, Robert Bailey, Samantha Vance, and Adam Shelton. Kathy Myers and Gail Abrams both had council members indicate they wanted them for the shorter term, so it might make sense to do a final vote between those to see which, a tie vote, which one of them would...
Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I believe maybe it was Gail that had put in for the Transit Committee, and it might be helpful for us to see if she was selected for that and maybe make it easy on us on this one.
Sure, we can come back to this. You want to do Transit first?
And I think that's an acceptable process.
Okay, so we'll go for Transit, and there are three regular members. Applicants were Gail Abrams. My apologies, Catherine Crowdy was included in the list, but she actually does not live in town, so she was not eligible. So that's why her name is crossed out. The other applicants are Patty Culross, Leslie Frushy, and for second choice, it was Keith Shilt and Daniel Rodriguez. We did have council majority on these, so Gail Abrams will be appointed, Patty Culross, and Leslie Frushy, if this works.
Let's move back to senior.
Yep.
Can you read off the total count for each row?
Yes. Lydia Aslan received two votes, Nicola Frye received four, Don Foreman received seven, Kathy Myers received four, Gail Abrams received four, Robert Bailey received five, Samantha Vance received three, and Adam Shelton received six.
So I think our process says you seat from the highest number, and then if there's a tie, and do I read this right, that we have a seven, a five, and a six, and then a three-way tie at four votes each?
Yes. Do you want, I can do a second slide with just the folks who received the four votes.
Mayor? Let's come over to Councilmember Quinn.
I'll change my vote from Abrams to Kathy Myers.
And Councilmember Vice Mayor?
I can change my, I said Gail Abrams for the shorter, I can move the shorter term to Kathy Myers and move my vote to Adam Shelton.
So I think, I want to note that we don't get to choose the shorter, the...
Oh, we don't?
The person with the least votes that is...
Okay.
So you are moving your Gail Abrams votes to...
Yes, since I'm eliminating Gail Abrams and giving that vote to Adam. So that gives him the majority votes, along with John Foreman.
Okay, so now Gail Abrams no longer has a majority.
So, and we are at, we are at three that are moving through, and do we lose, and then we have a two-way tie with four votes? Am I keeping up with my math? No, we have Kathy Myers...
Sorry, this is tricky. Kathy Myers actually now has five votes, and it looks like Nicola Frye has four votes, so she would be the shorter.
And that would be five seats right there.
That would be five.
And each of them with, and all of them have a majority council vote?
Correct. So that would be Nicola Frye in with the vacated term, Don Foreman with the full term, Kathy Myers, Robert Bailey, and Adam Shelton with the full term.
Okay, I think the math is good, amazingly. Thank you. Appreciate that clarity. And we're moving now back to...
Yes, so we already covered Transit, so now we're moving to Tree Advisory Committee. On this slide, you'll see the gray applicants were the applications that came in late. And again, these were not folks who had technical difficulties. They reached out and asked to be considered late. I'll read the full list.
Please.
Stephanie Sanchez, this was her first choice, DJ Gacker, it was his second choice, and Diane Gentile and Garrett Stouse were the late applicants.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add my second vote to Stephanie Sanchez. I thought it was just one person, so I stepped there.
So you're missing a vote, you're adding it into Stephanie Sanchez, I see.
Correct.
And we also have, so I'd like to get a consensus here on whether a late, it's not typical that we allow late applicants after the deadline. Do we have the discretion to waive that? Is that the council's pleasure, or do we want to hold precedent with what we have? And that would be like in the form of a motion, though it's not really a resolution or anything, but...
I was going to say, I didn't understand that the bottom two were late, not due to a technical difficulty. So in light of that, I would be inclined to consider moving my vote to the other applicant who wasn't late.
And not modify our precedent?
That's correct. That's correct.
And I'll go with DJ because I didn't realize there was two. I thought there was only one.
All right, and should we have? And does anyone else want to express a opinion on whether we allow a late? Councilmember Schrube?
Okay, I'll go ahead and argue the case for Diane Gentile, because what happened was, according to the information that was put out, two positions were available, but only one, really, one applicant was there for that, two positions. So we have an individual here who, seeing that was just one applicant for two positions, decided to step up, says, "I'm going to join in since nobody else has, I'm going to come on in with it." So the late applicant might, I think, could be excused for the lateness because she's stepping up in a role that we wouldn't have someone without that. And having DJ Gacker as the second choice, and I also know that Diane is very involved in the community and has been out and worked with trees quite a bit over the last couple of years with relief and everything else. So I would support Diane Gentile in this case.
So I'm going to ask this in the form of a straw poll then. So the straw poll question is, do we allow a late applicant in contrast to our past precedents? So if you're a yes, we allow a late applicant, raise your hand. And so you're in, you're in. Two, three, four. Okay, we have four votes to break our practice, so we're going to do that. So next, looking at this, I see three and three. And unless anyone wants to revise their statement, I think we now vote...
I just wanted to note, Councilmember DeCarly only voted for one, which is fine, but if you wanted to vote a second time...
Which is fine. I'm inviting councilmembers to say whether this is their vote or not. And without anybody saying it's not their vote, we'll move to one appointed, and now we'll do the tie practice, which is to have the two votes up there next to each other.
So this is the second round, I'll just...
And we can do this in the form of a roll call.
Barnacle?
Gentile.
Cater Thompson?
DJ.
DeCarly?
Gentile.
Gentile.
Now?
Gentile.
Quinn?
Gentile.
Schrubs?
Gentile.
Apologies. Schrubs?
He's in for Gentile.
And McDonald?
Well, the handwriting's on the wall. I'm just going to join the party here. So Gentile, yes.
Okay, thank you. We've received majority vote for Diane Gentile.
And I think at this point, where we validate the resolution, are you prepared to list them all, or are we going to have that as just part of the record already?
I'll use this to create the list on the resolution, and I'll upload this to the website so folks can see each round.
That's fabulous. And so we've nominated, or council has made that nomination for appointment, and now this is a roll call vote on the collection. So please have that roll call vote.
Could we have a motion and a second?
I'll move approval of the proposed appointments as read.
I'll second that.
Barnacle and Cater Thompson, thank you very much.
Barnacle?
Hi.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly? DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know that's tricky, but I think we all, we did well to get there. Now that brings us to item 20, our workshop for the evening, and it's the continuing, the continuing discussion of areas of change, land use designation, and land use alternatives to receive feedback and direction from City Council to inform development of a preferred land use map as part of development of the draft general plan.
Can we get five minutes, Mayor?
And Madam Clerk, if we would, if the clerk would post up a five-minute recess, we'll see if the council's back or the slideshow is up first. Thank you.
I tried. How many times did they ask you for a meeting? Yeah.
Madam Clerk, are we back in? We're recording.
We are.
Good. Meeting is called back into order, and I'd like to do a little bit of staging of this conversation for the evening here, mainly that, as has our past land use planning events, workshops been conducted. This will be in segments, addressing particular parts, and tonight we have three particular parts that we're going to separate. And I'll let staff walk us into that, but at the, at the end of each segment, there'll be a public comment, period. And we will be able to have a chat about that element before we move to the next element, since each of them is pretty weighty. And with that, I'd like to invite Heather Hines, our Special Projects Manager, to tee up the evening's workshop.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We are here before you yet again to talk about land use. So we are here for the third, hopefully in an installment of three, to have this conversation. As the mayor mentioned, it is weighty content, so we have found that some of the discussion, it was better to slow down and have that discussion, and we have gotten a lot of great feedback out of it. So I am going to kick things off, but I want to, I'm here with my colleagues, Brian, Community Development Director, and Ron and Simran from Ramean Associates, both principals with Ramean Associates. So these two are actually going to do much of the heavy lifting in terms of the presentation and helping lead us through this conversation. I also want to point out that there are two members of the General Plan Advisory Committee here as well, and I will touch on that as part of my presentation. But the General Plan Advisory Committee, or GPAC, as we might abbreviate it, has really been instrumental in this conversation. So want to welcome them here and welcome the council to utilize them, to ask questions of them, to seek their input, because they did spend a lot of time going through this material before it came before you. So even though we've been here three times, I just want to take a moment to kind of context set here. This discussion about land use is really driven by the values and goals that we have been discussing throughout the last couple of years as part of this general plan update. So all of the things that are before you keep coming back to what are those values? What are those goals? What are those drivers that we've been talking about in the community with our boards and commissions and committees, with the council, with the General Plan Advisory Committee? And that is what we keep checking ourselves against and making sure that the policies, the land use designations, the land use map are all reflecting this feedback we've received. Similarly, the basic visions that we heard early on in the visioning process, even the information gathering process with the community, there have been some very specific and strong and supported visions, like accessing the river, open space and access along the river, like creating 15-minute activity centers throughout town, like the evolution of our single-family neighborhoods, like focusing our development in our core around transit and services. So again, these are not new. This is stuff we have been talking about throughout this process, and it continues to be reflected in our land use discussion. So really, because we've been talking about these things and these have not changed, what we're really here to talk with the council about in, in many ways is how much change are we talking about? What's that right amount with these recommendations? Did we, did we get it right? And also providing that background of where did the recommendation come from? How did the community respond? How did the General Plan Advisory Committee maybe refine that? And then bringing it back to the council for your feedback before we go to the land use map. Which then brings us as a great segue, so our next steps, once we get this final feedback on the land use, the remaining areas of change, the land use designation standards, we are going to be embarking on a preferred land use map and accompanying that will be a number of technical studies that we will be doing. So when we come back to the GPAC, the Planning Commission, and the City Council, we will have a preferred land use map, and we will have this data along with it, so you can better understand the growth projections, the transportation impacts, fiscal impacts. So that's where we're going next with this feedback So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but we did get great feedback at the March 3rd and April 14th City Council workshop, so we have taken that information. Some of it we reconfirmed at the last meeting, just to make sure we had accurately reflected that. All of that information, along with the feedback that we'll receive tonight, is what we're going to take and, and create that, that preferred land use map. So all of that is out there. It is being reflected. You're not going to see it necessarily in a map that you might look at today, although we have tried to keep the online GIS portal up to date with adding a new layer each time to show that evolution. But all of that is going to go into the preferred land use map. So as the mayor mentioned, we've broken things down really into three segments, if you will. So we're starting with discussion about the nodes and the centers, and specifically the five that are listed here. Many of the other ones have already been discussed as part of a larger area of change, or some, some other way. These are the five that really we haven't touched on yet. So they're the five that we will focus on. The second segment is going to be talking about the land use designation standards, which is, it was, I can't remember the attachment, but it was an attachment to the staff report. It is the spreadsheet that talks about all the different land use designations that we're looking at, and some basic standards for each of those land use designations. So we will spend some time on that. And then the final segment is really a follow-up on the River Park area of change. This is an area that we didn't have consensus about among the council at the last meeting, and there has also been some changes in that, that effort with the foundation. So we want to circle back and confirm the right approach to that. So after, for each of these three segments, we're going to give a brief presentation, then the mayor is going to open it up for public comment, and then bring it back to the council for discussion, any input with the GPAC that the council may like, and then straw poll on any of the feedback as necessary, just to make sure that we're all on the same page with what the majority council's feedback is. So that's a run-of-show for how we see this meeting running this evening. General Plan Advisory Committee, I already said much of this, but General Plan Advisory Committee was appointed by the City Council. They have been really an amazing group of volunteers, very committed to this process, and have been an incredible asset to this process. So from digging in, like the land use designation standards table, the GPAC did a deep dive. They really got into each of those standards and discussed and manipulated and refined. And so what you have before you is their recommendations for that level of detail. Also, when we got differing public comment, helping to have that discussion and figure out what was the right, right approach. So very thankful for that support, and very thankful for the members that are here tonight, and again, encourage the council to utilize that as you may see fit. And then finally, it's in detail in the staff report, but we are continuing to talk with property owners. A mailer went out to all the property owners within the areas of change, because those are the areas that really the change is being focused on. Lots of resources to meet with us, call us, you know, get more information from us, information on the website. So we have been having those conversations, and we will continue to do outreach as this process continues to evolve, so that it will get more and more specific as the preferred land use map comes out. And as we know, more specifics on every single parcel and what changes will mean, we will continue to do additional outreach. And with that, I think I'm handing it over to Ron to kick off our nodes and centers discussion.
Thank you, Heather, and good evening, councilmembers. It's good to be back with you again this evening. As Heather mentioned, with us this evening is another principal from Ramean Associates, Simran Malhotra. She focuses and specializes in both general plan updates and zoning code updates, and so she's here tonight to support your discussion specifically of the land use designation standards. But first, as both the mayor and Heather mentioned, we're going to provide a brief, brief presentation on the five areas of change that we haven't yet discussed in detail. And then, as both the mayor and Heather also mentioned, I'm going to present on each five, and then we'll stop for public comment, and then tackle each in order as appropriate. Before introducing those five centers, I did want to provide a short refresher on some other most related land use policies. In addition to being areas of change, each of these five centers or nodes that we're discussing this evening are also identified in the land use policy framework as 15-minute activity centers. And these are the focus of Goal Area Six in the Land Use Policy Framework, excuse me, Chapter Two, which includes six goal areas, and Goal Area Six specifically begins identifying some specific candidates for 15-minute activity centers. There are many included in that list, and the five areas we're discussing this evening are five of those. And I just want to remind you that as part of Goal Six, focusing on these centers as a number of policies, I think focused very much on establishing these as a centers, creating or enhancing them in different ways depending on their size and scale and location, taking a proactive role in facilitating their development or redevelopment as may be appropriate at all levels. So there's four types of centers that are identified, town centers, neighborhood centers, mini centers, and activated parks. And so there are strategies within the draft land use policy framework addressing each of those. You've seen this map many times before. Next slide, please, sorry. This is the complete map of activity centers, and you'll see the five that we're discussing on that map in addition to many others. And as Heather mentioned earlier, several of them are also part of the areas of change that you've discussed previously, and then others are also outside of areas of change because of land use- And then others are also outside of areas changed because a land use designation change was not necessary to advance them as activity centers. Should also note that four of the five sites that we're discussing this evening were also identified through the ESTAT process, the Sustainable Design Assessment Team process, which was a community-driven planning effort that very much focused on helping Petaluma evolve into a 15-minute city. Okay, so let's now turn to the first of the five centers for discussion this evening. If you're following along in the briefing book, this Bowling Alley and Veterans Center node starts on page 61. And I'm going to be using the excerpts from the briefing book to provide you a brief overview for each of these centers this evening. So this area is on Petaluma Boulevard South in the proximity of McNear. It's also identified, as I noted, in the land use policy framework as Neighborhood Center Number Seven. We reviewed some of the history, and this area was identified very early on in the planning process when we invited people to give us input on where they thought there was opportunity for change. And this was one of the sites that folk people identified on a map. The G-PAC in turn began discussing its potential during its initial discussions of areas of change in 2023. And then during the final discussion of areas of change, most recently in January of this year, they suggested including the adjacent parcel that's currently medium-density residential, which is orange on the map you have before you, because several members had professional knowledge of that site and thought that it also was an opportune site for some increased mix of use and density. And so you'll see that reflected in tonight's recommendation as well. And in many ways, people see this as a node that has the potential to complement both development and redevelopment along the corridor, as well as that part of the boulevard serving as a gateway to the city. The current designations, as you see on that previous slide, are a mix of RMD, public use for the Veterans Center, and then neighborhood commercial for the Bowling Alley site. The intent of the alternatives that were presented to the community last summer for input was to get their feedback on how intense future development in these areas might be. And so they were presented with kind of a low, medium, high-density option. Next slide, please. The community leaned towards the low to medium intensity. And then the G-PAC in turn, during its latest and most recent discussion in early this year, unanimously supported the recommendation similar to Alternative Two, which is a step-down mixed-use designation for the parcels in this area. And you'll see that reflected on the next slide. And this would allow a slight increase in intensity and a mix of uses to align with the existing non-residential in the area, but with a step-down transition to the neighboring residential neighborhoods. And so as a reminder, the step-down mixed-use designation allows 20 to 45 dwelling units per acre, 2.5 FAR, four stories at the maximum height, stepping down to three adjacent to the residential neighborhoods, and has no active ground floor requirement. And then just also important to note that in nearly all cases, these land use designations that were change in designation that we're considering are also complemented by a number of land use policies, as well as policies and other elements of the general plan. In this case, there are policies that speak to improving corridors, streetscapes and city gateways, which would certainly apply in this area as well. Also implementing the active transportation plan with a focus on expanding transit service in this area, and also preserving trees. If you look at an aerial of the site that's currently designated medium-density residential, there's quite a number of trees on that site. And so as part of the G-PAC's discussion, they noted that it'd be important to develop that site in a manner that preserved the trees to the extent possible. And so that'd be an important complementary policy in this case. Moving on to Western and Baker. And we're not far from this site, just catty corner across that way. And if you're following along in the briefing book, this is page 81. Again, like the Bowling Alley and Veterans area, Center area, this also was identified by the community early on as a site for potential change. Also was identified through the ESTAT process as a potential 15-minute node within the neighborhood. Interestingly, the retail consultant that's part of the consultant team also identified this site as an opportunity, identified for the site opportunities to build on the existing creamery and mixed-use frontages as kind of uniquely situated potential neighborhood And then also as part of that, the potential for a vertical mix of use. During last summer's engagement, the community was presented with two alternatives of mixed-use intensity, again, kind of a smaller and a medium version of that. Next slide, please. Community input pointed towards the lower-intensity option with a three-story maximum height. The G-PAC felt strongly that there should be no immediate change, interestingly, but once the property owner was ready to transition away from existing industrial uses, the site should be provided maximum redevelopment flexibility, which then resulted in our recommendation, which is to not change the land use designation at this point, but identify the neighborhood center mixed-use designation as an appropriate designation if and when the landowner thinks it's appropriate and ready to reconsider uses on that site. That neighborhood center mixed-use designation would allow up to three stories, consistent with the current height and with community input, 15 to 30 dwelling units per acre, and would require active ground floor, which is consistent with creating that neighborhood center sense of feel and accessibility. Other policies that are in draft form that would complement this change include historic resource preservation and the adaptive reuse of sites that historically had a different use and now could be considered for a complementary, different use, changed use. Moving on to Casa Grande, and this is the vacant site adjacent to the high school. If you're following along in the briefing book, this is page 87. This also was identified early on as a site for potential change, also identified by the, through the ESTAT process, as a potential 15-minute node. And also, interestingly, is included as a site within the housing element. The G-PAC flagged it early on, along with sites of potential for change when they began considering areas of change. And the retail consultant also thinks this location could support the work-type projects, and so sees potential for conversion use as well. The current designation is medium-density residential, and the options we presented to the public were really kind of a mix of different potential heights, mixes of use and locations of those different types of use on the site. And the most support was for a lower to medium level of intensity. And in discussing this with the G-PAC in early 2025, they agreed with updated lower-intensity recommendation, which you see reflected on the next slide. And this is for applying the neighborhood center mixed-use, the same designation as at the creamery in the future, which is consistent with the current medium-density residential designation, but allowing a mix of use, greater flexibility for the property owner. Again, three stories, 15 to 30 dwelling units per acre and an active ground floor. Policies elsewhere that would complement this change include implementing the ATP, and in this case with a focus on safe routes to school and creating a very low-stress walking and biking network in close proximity. Our fourth center or node is the Leghorn Marketplace. In the briefing book, this is on page 93. This is the existing shopping center with Safeway as the anchor, adjacent to a large park and in proximity to the junior college. Also identified by, through the ESTAT process, as a potential 15-minute node. The retail consultant again also says, however, says demand may be limited, and so the redevelopment potential is more unknown on this site. But if it were to become a greater, be redeveloped and include a greater mix of use and diversity of uses, it could complement and begin to evolve as an existing gathering site to complement the adjacent uses and could certainly support the junior college as well. The current designation is for neighborhood commercial. The community's input was invited on lower and higher-intensity mixed-use options, and their feedback was split. Lots of support for intensifying and diversifying the mix of use, more so for the lower option. The G-PAC's recommendation was consistent with the community's, and it is consistent with the step-down mixed-use that we're recommending, which allows a relatively lower-intensity 20 to 45 dwelling units per acre, 2.5 FAR, up to four stories, but again with a step-down adjacent to lower-intensity uses. And because it's an existing shopping center that would not require the active ground floor requirement in the SDMU. Related policies elsewhere include proactive outreach to property owners to facilitate redevelopment of existing shopping centers, and again, implementing the active transportation plan with a focus on safe routes and the low-stress network. And finally, our fifth center or node for tonight's discussion, and this starts on page 74 of the briefing book, the Washington Square and the Plaza Centers at the intersection of McDowell and Washington Boulevard. These are existing shopping centers. And also, at a later date, the Healthy Petaluma site was added further down McDowell. Washington Square specifically was identified early on in the community process as an opportunity site for change. ESTAT also identified it as a potential 15-minute node. It's also included in the housing element as a housing site. And the retail consultant identified it as feasible and desirable for redevelopment, and this is Washington Square specifically. Current designations include community commercial on the larger shopping center sites and business park on the Healthy Petaluma site. Community feedback was invited on lower and higher-intensity options. Community was not supportive of allowing up to five stories on the Washington Square site specifically. I should note that higher intensities were mapped for input on the Washington Square site and lower intensities initially on the Plaza sites. And so the response to the higher intensity on the Washington Square site was not positive. When discussed with the G-PAC in early 2025, eight members were in support of the recommendation to apply adjustments to the step-down setback revision, which we'll see on the next slide, and three others were more supportive of the original higher-intensity recommendation. And so what we've come to you this evening with is an application of step-down mixed-use at Washington Square and on the southern portion of the larger Plaza shopping centers, and then a higher-intensity urban core mixed-use on Plaza North and the Healthy Petaluma site. So the step-down mixed-use, as I've noted, is 20 to 45 dwelling units per acre, 2.5 FAR and up to four stories with a three-story step-down adjacent to the residential neighborhoods. And this is where the G-PAC helped us refine where that step-down should be. And then the urban corridor mixed-use would be 30 to 75 dwelling units per acre, a 3.5 FAR, up to five stories with a step-down to four. Three are currently allowed and does require a ground floor active, active ground floor use. As noted in the staff report, to avoid conflicts with vested property rights and to ensure maximum flexibility to facilitate redevelopment of larger shopping centers like this one, the team is recommending that the requirement for horizontal mixed-use on large sites like these, over 2.5 acres, where the urban corridor mixed-use designation is applied, be modified to encourage but not require the horizontal mixed-use, so that we don't infringe on vested property rights, as is the case in the Plaza North site. Again, as with the other change in land use designation, this is complemented by a number of policies elsewhere in the draft general plan, including proactive outreach to property owners to facilitate redevelopment, improvements to corridors, streetscapes and city gateways, and implementing the active transportation plan. By way of summary, I just want to quickly note that none of these recommendations are really a radical departure from the existing general plan designations, in most cases up to maybe one additional story in height being permitted, but in many cases, a height, maximum height being consistent with the current designation. Two of the sites are housing element sites, and so the cities are already identifying them, identified them as sites where it'd like to see greater, more dense and intense housing. All of these options would increase flexibility for the landowners for development or redevelopment, and all are consistent with a number of recommendations we received from the community, including the ESTAT, the community feedback last summer that was conducted extensively, and with the G-PAC recommendations. So with that, we'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. I know council has lots of questions, but since council often puts questions in context of comments, I'm going to allow that to happen after we do a public comment on this. I'm going to jump first to public comment tonight. And I'd like the clerk to open us up to public comment on this particular element, remembering there are three chances to win tonight, but we're going to try and keep the questions or comments focused on just this piece. And I'm going to say that Chantel Rogers will be our first.
We also received three comments ahead of the meeting, which are posted online.
Wonderful, thank you. Am I missing any cards for this element? No? Okay. Chantel would be our first speaker, followed by Danielle Nelson.
Great, thank you. I was just curious, in these presentations, I don't see anything about redevelopment involving necessary parking. So like if you put a bunch of housing in the center where the Kmart is and all of that, how does that mesh with the parking necessary for the commercial that's already there? Or, you know, I'm just wondering if that's part of the planning, if there, or is that a zoning thing, X number of spots per unit? Or, you know, what's it going to look like when we get all that together? So I'm just hoping there'll be some clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Danielle Nelson to be followed by Warren Dranett.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Staff. My name's Danielle Nelson. I'm the General Manager of Petaluma Village Premium Outlets owned by Simon Property Group. I just wanted to share that Simon has submitted a letter in support of the staff recommendations for the Makerspace designation, and I'd like to thank our City Manager and staff for immediately engaging in discussion with me and our Senior Vice President of Development over the shopping center. I want to thank you, and I look forward to the continued collaboration between all departments. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you very much. Warren Dranett to be followed by Anita Pellegrini.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to Section Two, please.
Ah, okay. Nina Zito.
I suppose I should feel reassured that so much planning has gone into this and so many acronyms and so much glib reference to extensive community outreach was done. I'd like to know how much, when and by whom, because this member of the community was not aware of all the great opportunities you've sketched out for my neighborhood right around here, not far. And I'm glad you, your retail consultants have identified promise, but I don't share your optimism. It's noisy, it's crowded. I don't want to live like that. This isn't the town I moved into 25 years ago, and you planning experts may think that that's how Petalumans want to live, but I say, not me. I've had enough. Just like, slow it down. Your priorities, your acronyms, your nodes. What the node? You know, keep your... You know, keep your theory, but the way of life here is rapidly changing, and it's not for the better. So I have some ideas about where you can put your node.
Thank you. Dwayne Bellinger.
Yes, good evening. I hope my comments are a result of my misunderstanding of one of the comments made about the Leghorn Node. And I want to say that that property was developed many years ago to serve the commercial needs of the people that would want to live in that area. 300 homes, the hundreds of people looking for ability to have a shopping center near them and buy their groceries, walk to the stores, and have other things. I may have heard that there was a possibility of developing that entirely as housing. And I think these people who bought homes there 30 years ago all expect it to continue to be shopping center within walking distance. And putting housing above portions of it would be excellent. Student housing above, there's a park right there for people to live. So two or three stories of housing above the shopping center would be great, but let's not, let's not take out that lovely walkable node.
Thank you. And I see one rushing contestant to come to the, come right to the podium there and take your way.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, staff. Tonight, I watched you guys outline about six different construction properties that you decide to want to redevelop, but yet we still can't even come up with one public restroom anywhere. If it's a 15-minute city, am I going to have to take the bus to go use the restroom? You guys need to start.
Okay. The restroom, not on the agenda tonight. I hear you, what you're saying.
Well, this is about redevelopment, isn't it? And then about a 15-minute use of this.
Right.
Of the city.
Right.
Now, isn't that part of this redevelopment?
You're requesting that any of these projects have public restrooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do they? I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment on this element of this and brings it up to the questions and comments of council. And staff would like to weigh in?
Can I?
Please.
Mayor, respond to a couple of things. So question about parking regs. So the general plan specifically doesn't establish zoning regulations or parking regulations, excuse me. Those will be in the zoning code. There are some policies in the general plan about, I believe it's establishing maximums, unbundling parking. There's a lot of things that are in there as a policy. And with the zoning code, that's when you will get down to the nitty-gritty of how many parking spaces may be required as a minimum or allowed to a maximum. So that's kind of the implementation is when we will start talking about parking regulations. The comment about Leghorn, it is exactly that. It's to allow greater flexibility, not to remove the commercial, but to allow redevelopment, addition of housing, not removal of the commercial to create that center, that 15-minute activated center, potentially with more residential and commercial to serve that. And while we're talking about redevelopment, the general plan in and of itself isn't getting to a project level, so it's not actually establishing redevelopment projects. It is setting the stage, it's setting the broad context of what does the community want to see in terms of the type of uses, the density, the intensity of use. So I just kind of want to clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just one broad comment. I keep having to bring myself back to the general plan is like our vision for the future. And vision is another way of saying what we don't have right today, what will we do different tomorrow? But it's not us who's doing it necessarily. It's doors we're trying to open. So it's tricky that how all these parts fit together. I know we have the housing element out there, mentioned a couple, this is in the housing element as an opportunity site. All those things coming together, we don't know what is viable at any point in the future. And we don't actually even know why something isn't viable today. You know, we do a study, but then another project comes up and it seems to work for the alternate. So I think the general plan and the elements we're working on now are about providing opportunities for that bigger goal, which in my mind is housing, affordability housing. So it's natural that we wouldn't feel the specifics are good enough at this point. And I'm going to jump in a little. I am concerned that with all the focus on housing and affordability of housing now and the opportunity we're creating, that we're chasing some of our commercial away or allowing them an escape, shall we say? You know, what protects the Safeway in Leghorns from turning into strictly a housing opportunity? And that would be the same in any shopping center. You know, what would, what would keep commercial in our city and not let it happen to be to go all residential on one of these things? Is that a protected thing in the zoning?
It is. Thank you, Mayor. So it is protected in a sense that it's an existing viable use. And so the example of Leghorn Safeway, that property is owned. My understanding is that it is owned by the Safeway market. It'll continue, I mean, they're in the business of providing a local place for people to shop and have that commercial use. So long as it's a viable use, there wouldn't, there would, it's a high unlikelihood that there's an incentive to turn that over. Usually what the catalyst to do something like that is if it's something that there is no economy here, there, you know, we don't have the density, we don't have the population to sustain a certain level of commercial, that's when we start to see some of the deterioration. Kmart being an example. Retail, I mean, that's, in our lifetime, it's changed. The face of retail has changed, the way that, you know, when we talk every day with our local brokers on what local businesses are looking for, it's not those big, big-box retailers anymore. And so part of this vision not only is to accomplish the housing goals that we have as a community and as a council, but it's to provide that balance, provide that economic sustainability and viability for not just our existing retailers and businesses, but future businesses over the course of the 25 years.
Thank you. Kind of corollary to that, you mentioned that you've done stakeholder outreach, property owner outreach, and I think that's important first step, but neighbor outreach has to occur before a decision is made. You know, it has to be a community thing. And I know we've been into the community and kind of broached those conversations with the community. One case in point I want to ask about, opinion about, we had a proposal next to the vet center for a housing complex, and it was pretty dense, and the neighbors objected to it, which is not untypical. And in our layout of that section, we show the same property coming back as residential sort of again, and the bowling alley as being the commercial. If the residential property owner came in and said, I'd rather go the other way and try and put in some 15-minute walking, does the zoning allow that one to be the commercial side? And then what happens to the bowling alley? Do they lose their commercial? Do we encourage them more into residential? How does that all work when somebody comes to planning?
Well, much of what we're talking about is some level of the mixed-use designations, like for instance, the Bowling Alley Vets building and the, I think it was called the Vartnau property. What is proposed is all to be step-down mixed use. So that gives the greatest flexibility. So there's not one of those parcels that's like, this is the residential, and you can only do residential, and this is the commercial, and you can only do residential. By using those mixed-use land use designation, it provides greater flexibility. So they could both incorporate residential, they can both incorporate commercial, you know, different community. So it avoids that. And that, that is one of the things that the G-PAC spent a lot of energy looking at is what provides the greatest flexibility so that we can see movement in these, in these parcels that we have identified as being a great asset to the neighborhood, to the community, and how do we remove the barriers? So much of what we've been talking about so far are some, some type of the mixed-use designation, which provides that greatest flexibility.
Certainly, I think that south end of town has the, one of the best potentials for 15-minute change.
And I'll just add, you had the question about what happens at the counter. So if, again, we're trying to provide the most flexibility here, there's a range of allowable uses. If, for whatever reason, a property owner has a vision to do something and redevelop it in some way that the general plan doesn't allow it to, then it would need to go through an entitlement process, likely a general plan amendment, zoning code. And so there is a separate, more project-level planning process that would happen if, if things changed.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Shribbs?
I have a few questions or comments, just to follow up what the mayor's talking, just for clarity on, as an example. Having taught at Casa Grande High School and the prop for many years, the property there at one time was up for sale, was in process, and they were going to build three-story townhouses on the site. Deal fell through because the pipe wasn't big enough for the water to get to the site to feed everybody there. I haven't seen any construction of a new pipe in that area. Do we have enough, first off, do we have enough water in that area for higher density?
So to your point, there was a previous attempt. So we have in conversation with the school district. So this is Petaluma City Schools that owns the property. There hasn't been that level of analysis, but with any proposal that actually may come to fruition, that would all have to be considered at the project level. And so this is something that the, I don't believe the board has written anything in favor, but it's something that we have been working with the school district, and they're very supportive of the proposal.
Okay. Just, I just remind you, this is what happened 20 years ago, and you may not have been here when that happened.
Sorry, one other quick point. Earlier, Heather showed a slide of the analysis that we'll be doing once we're clear on the land use designation changes the council would like to see. And part of that was a utilities analysis. So we will be looking in part at that question, is does the current infrastructure support land use change as envisioned? And if not, what types of improvements would be required?
Right. I just thought I'd point out a prior situation that you may not have been aware of. But going back to the question.
Can I just add for you there? Correct me, all development pays for all its own utility upgrade. The city wouldn't have the obligation. It would be part of their pro forma, can they afford to develop? And I think in that case, 15, 20 years ago, maybe twice, they defaulted their deposits back to the school districts and what a magnitude, like a million dollars they defaulted back, those developers.
We were told it was, the pipe wasn't big enough, and the city was, couldn't, could not make it any bigger. So that's, that's the story we got. Anyway, just thought I'd report that first. But I want to go back to the question of the mixed use and the terminology, mixed use. What is required and are we preventing anything? Because I would think that being the site was originally going to be fully residential, townhouses, could someone come back in, the original person that made the first offer, come back in and says, oh, I want to develop that original plan. It's going to be three, four-story townhouses and the like. Even though it's mixed use now and a community-centered designation and a node designation, would we cooperate with that and say, okay, we'll look at that? Or are we going to require? It has to be mixed use. It has to be a community center, a node that provides other than residential. How are we going to respond?
The particular designation proposed for this site, the neighborhood center mixed use, allows really any mix of use, either all residential, all commercial, or a mix of all of the above. And in terms of the types of residential, it would allow all residential with the exception of single-family.
Okay. Because I think just someone that wants to develop that property, we're still going to allow that to happen, fully residential if someone makes that as the proposal.
Yes.
That's still acceptable. I want to make that clear.
And councilmember Shribbs, that's on the land use designation standards table. That's why, and this is another thing that the G-PAC spent quite a bit of time on, was being really clear in which of these mixed-use designations can you have standalone residential? Can you have standalone commercial? Is mixed use required? To just get really to like, take that specificity, because that's another thing that the certainty helps with facilitating housing development when you don't have certainty. And so it's taking some of the lack of certainty that we heard feedback on from our existing general plan and the definition of mixed use and trying to put more certainty along with it. So that's why you have those additional standards in that, in that land use standards table.
Good. Some of the vocabulary gets a little confusing when you say standalone housing and, but also standalone, okay, a building of housing and a building of commercial, but both are being required as mixed use if you're requiring, but no, you can have all housing, you can have all business, it's optional.
Correct. And it depends on which land use designation. So that might not be the case in the downtown core where we do want that ground floor activation. So there, it differentiates by land use designation, mixed-use land use designation. But yes, if it says standalone residential is allowed, that means you could just do apartment building.
Okay, good. I just wanted to get clear on that, because I was a little bit confused up to this point on that particular point. Okay. Then going back to the Western and Baker, and we've got a structure that we have, apparently some fairly new owners that took over running the creamery on those sites. And then we also have Barons and Hunts that are nearby that have said, oh, we may want to change. Have we talked to the owners of both about the options of what this might mean? And if we can reuse or restructure the current buildings on either of those sites? And which one would actually be better practically? The creamery site or Hunt and Barons at this point in time, turning it into a community center or node?
I mean, I don't think I'm going to be able to answer that. What we've tried to look at these, and this is another thing that has been very important in the community, is to make sure that we are facilitating our agricultural support businesses, that we're not making land use changes that makes them non-conforming, makes it more difficult for them to keep, keep operating. But also recognizing that times change and when time changes and if the market should dictate that it's not a viable business anymore, that property owner having some options. So both the Hunt and Barons, I believe the Dairyman's and the Creamery are not proposed as part of this general plan for a land use change. However, there's policy language to say if, when this is no longer a viable use, here are some, you know, ideas on things that it could change to, whether it's a mixed-use designation, a flex designation.
Right. So what I'm suggesting is, so not only the Western and Baker site, which is, I think, mostly the creamery there, but also these other sites that you just mentioned. which is I think mostly the Creamery there, but also these other sites that you just mentioned have equality and equity that they could also turn into that should they chose at some point in time in the near future. So we're not favoring one or the other, that all three sites might be appropriate. And it's up to the property owners to do so, but all three of those are close enough to each other. Each of them could be a community node, is what I'm suggesting. So that we're not pinpointing one out of the others, other couple ones that are there. Then on, in Washington Square versus the Plaza North. You've highlighted the Washington Square for the mixed use. Where however, because I live in that area, I go by all the time and I started counting up parking spaces or actual square foot that's available. And right now at Washington Square, it's pretty busy and pretty much parking, pretty full all along. There's cars parked almost in every single area pretty densely all the time. Whereas in Plaza North, I counted over 300 parking spaces in a block, a single block of 300 empty parking spaces. So that seems to be the higher party, I would think, for change in that particular area, right in the center of that plaza. I think it's two plazas that may be two different owners, but it's right in the center there. This is an area, even if the Kmart gets changed and parking there, there's still at least a block of 200 right there in the center. So I would suggest that that might be a more practical spot to work on versus Washington Square. Or at least keep them equal, like you had it in the map, you had them equal. So that's another suggestion I would throw up.
So I actually think that the recommendation is for Plaza South and Washington Square to be the step down mixed use. And Plaza North to be the urban corridor mixed use, which is a slightly more intense, has a slightly higher density and I believe a higher stories allowed. Goes up to five instead of four, stepping down to three in certain areas. And the reason that was discussed was, for instance, Plaza South is right across the street from single family residential, whereas Plaza North is not. And so that, just that little bit more potential intensity and increase in density was focused on the Plaza North. I want to remind that these changes in land use designation, it doesn't force, it doesn't mean it's going to happen tomorrow. We have a lot of things that we thought were going to happen in our current general plan or we thought was going to happen in our Central Petaluma specific plan that has not happened. You know, we allow six story buildings in our Central Petaluma specific plan and unlimited density. But yet we, that has been in place for over 20 years now and we haven't seen it. So I want to just kind of like, keep going back to it is creating, creating opportunity, but it's not, it's not creating a project. It's not mandating a redevelopment or getting to the project level. So that's, that's why all three of those shopping centers were, looked at for a change to mixed use from I think their community commercial or C2 zoning and community commercial. So going to a mixed use, so if they are going to redevelop, having that flexibility to redevelop in a pattern that is more in keeping with Petaluma today.
Okay, good, thank you. That's all I had for the moment.
Great, Councilmember Quinn?
Yeah, thank you. You touched on one of my curiosities. I was following the discussion about creating, you know, the greatest level of flexibility. And I was curious about with the Washington Square, the step down mixed use with the, you know, on one part of it compared, you know, with the urban corridor mixed use in another part of it. And I was curious if the step down mixed use there offered more flexibility. It didn't seem intuitive that that was the case. But I see now in, in looking at it, that the decision there was probably, I'm sort of asking a question, answering it at the same time, that it was because it's adjacent to housing where the urban corridor mixed use section isn't. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, that was part of our thinking in suggesting the higher intensity designation at the Plaza North area. There's, there's not the immediately adjacent residential. Across the way is Casey Park and then I believe to the north is a, is that a non-residential development immediately to the north or?
It's senior, senior housing.
Okay.
Into Chetow.
I should note that that designation, though it allows five stories, it does have a step down to four stories where appropriate, so that would apply in that case.
Yeah, if the housing wasn't adjacent, does the urban corridor offer more flexibility? Or is there something else within that that would be more prohibitive?
The bulk of the flexibility comes with the opportunity for greater densities and intensities primarily.
Got it, so if it, if it were urban corridor and someone wanted to build something that was more, you know, within the step down mixed use, it's a smaller footprint or a smaller sized building, it would be allowed? I'm just trying to understand if there's something that wouldn't be allowed under the urban corridor that would be allowed under step down mixed use.
And if my recollection is correct, I feel like the G-PAC talked quite a bit about these sites and the right intensity. I'm seeing some, some nodding specifically for that. Just in some ways, it's a great opportunity to increase the allowable density and intensity. Housing, you know, great, great location, near park, easy access to the 101 for commutes, the fairgrounds and everything that's going on, on the fairgrounds. So in some ways, there were members of the G-PAC, and I don't, I feel very uncomfortable speaking for them, especially with my back to them, but that thought maybe like, the whole thing should be an urban corridor. All three of them should be urban corridor mixed use just to allow that greater-
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going.
That greater height, that greater density.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great site and, you know, I, I'm good with the recommendation. I was just kind of curious why we wouldn't want to go, if there was an argument for not having the whole thing be urban corridor. But, but I understand the thinking. My next question was, in looking at the difference between Casa Grande, where we have, the current recommended approach is neighborhood center mixed use. And then Leghorns, it's, Leghorn is, pardon me, step down mixed use, which is slightly more dense. I'm just curious about why we wouldn't think about those two. Is there a reason that we wouldn't think about those two properties sort of in the same vein? I mean, I, you know, I would love to see, you know, some retail, some housing on both sites. And I was just curious why we might have a less dense or maybe a more restrictive designation for Casa. Any thoughts?
Does anybody from the G-PAC want to?
No, between Leghorns. So between Leghorn, so Leghorns today, or the recommended designation for Leghorns is step down mixed use. And the recommended designation for Casa is neighborhood mixed use, which is slightly less dense. And I think about those two areas as kind of similar in opportunity. And I'm just curious why we would think about them differently from a land use designation?
I think it probably was a mix of some of the public input. So for instance, when we did the community discussion about Casa Grande, there was a pretty overwhelming negative to the denser. And there was a desired land use to see two to four stories and not taller than that. And then with Leghorn, I'm wondering if it was similar.
Yeah, there was more support at Leghorn for up to four stories. So the step down seemed more appropriate in that location.
Okay. My last question, so I noticed on, you know, on page 97 in relation to Leghorn, with the step down mixed use, in the pictures, we have a target shopping center sort of pictured as an envisioned use for that property. And I'm just curious if that's intentional or like, would that, would step down mixed use allow for a second retail shopping center to be built without having some residential component? I guess it, it allows for standalone commercial, standalone residential, but is that, I mean, would that be realistic, that that kind of store would go in there or could potentially go in there?
So I think a better image here may have, I think the intent isn't about a target fitting there. I think the intent, and I think in hindsight, team, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would have been just as effective, if not more effective, just to use the Safeway, the existing Safeway, just to show you that that's a potential use, this isn't inviting a second target into town.
Yeah, and again, I'm not thinking, that's a good point. And I'm not trying to suggest that it would be okay to build a Safeway and not okay to build a Target. More so, if Safeway came, you know, five, 10 years down the road and say, hey, we want to tear this building down and build a new Safeway because we want to build a better Safeway, would it be okay for them to build a Safeway without residential on top? Or would we ask them to, you know?
So standalone commercial is allowed in the step down mixed use. So it could be. And one of the other things, I believe, we don't have minimum heights. We have maximum heights, but not minimum heights. And that was, that was also a very deliberate discussion with the General Plan Advisory Committee because they like the idea of, of the changes you can have in, in development, that you don't have to come in and have a four story block, right? You could have some component of it that is a smaller one or two story and then maybe up to four story, but it allowed more creativity, flexibility, versatility, you know, which is kind of the theme that we're talking about here. So there would be other things that would come into place depending on the zoning code. So for instance, you know, a currently general retailer grocery store over, I think it's 25,000 square feet, requires a conditional use permit. So it might be something like that, that the city says, we want to keep that kind of provision in our zoning code, which allows us to kind of pause and look and is this appropriate to do a larger retail or a larger grocery store? There are also maybe policies in the, in the general plan. So maybe it's not the designation, but there's, when you go through a project, you might say, oh, well, you know, the intent here was really to see that as a neighborhood center with multiple options for the neighborhood. So we'd really like to encourage you to, all right, maybe you want to do a Safeway, but we'd really like to see some other smaller neighborhood serving commercial or community spaces or whatever it is. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty in-depth process that happens when somebody comes in and like, actually starts putting pen to paper on a, on a project. And your land use designation is one piece of that, but it's not the only piece of that.
Got it, okay, thank you, I appreciate the detail. Thank you. Councilmember DeCarli?
I don't really have any questions, just a couple of comments. But the first being, you know, Petaluma Creamery, and that was a business that took a big hit during COVID. Was doing quite well and successful prior to that. And, you know, has been rebuilding itself ever since and is doing exponentially well. And I don't think we'll be going anywhere. My other comments kind of branch off of what the mayor said earlier about, you know, this idea of flexibility and increasing more housing and in commercial areas. And this is something I've talked about before, but, you know, I don't, I'm not sure I agree with the word flexibility. I think when, you know, we're incentivizing commercial owners to try to go into more housing, also kind of under the guise that that's going to create more, you know, economic prosperity. And I think we overlook a great asset that we have here and that's 60,000 people in Petaluma. And I think that there should be a lot more emphasis upon where are those 60,000 people shopping? And if it's not in Petaluma, why is that? And how do we, how do we make the best of what we've got while protecting industrial and commercial sites? And, and helping those grow and thrive? So those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for, to staff for all your hard work and the G-PAC. My first question is the Petaluma Boulevard South. It has, you have the Veterans Center, you know, and then the Bowling Alley. And then, and that's all in good because it's across the street from, from new housing, which is Pep and the families, single family homes. But between that, Petaluma Boulevard and Mountain View and maybe halfway down the block till you get to, you know, across the street is like Henris Roofing. And then you've got Cavall and you've got all those other commercial buildings. That property is housing right now. I walked it recently and it's not really compatible to mixed use. So our, and I know a property owner came in at that March meeting and asked for some changes. Can you explain what the changes were? She has some questions on her property.
Sure, so we, we met with that property owner, Brian and I did. And we clarified that as, in the current information that's out, her property is not in one of the identified areas of change, which is why she didn't get a notice. Because the notices have gone out to property owners in areas of change. However, we did identify that there's about a block or so on that, I call it the western side of the boulevard down there, between where the Boulevard South area of change ends and the Bowling Alley area of change begins. And so we took a look at that, and this is outlined in your staff report. And we took a look at that and agreed like, it's an odd one to be left out. Why don't we just expand that area of change to kind of connect those? And so our recommendation was to make that additional block also step down mixed use. So kind of carrying what would, the Bowling Alley of that center would be step down mixed use and carrying that north to where it connects with the Petaluma Boulevard South. Not on the other side of the street, the other side of the street is very different. It's the, it's a much more kind of industrial in that area, different sized lots, different, different character. So we really focused on that change on the west side of the boulevard in that it's about a block or a block and a half. So that's, that's what we outlined in the staff report. And that's what we would see moving forward to the preferred land use map.
It's just not reflected, it's not reflected in the slides.
Right.
I had it in my notes, but I wanted to clarify it. The other thing you mentioned on the central specific plan was- Um, the other thing you mentioned on the central specific plan was, um, you know, it was designed and approved twenty years ago, and that's when our last general plan was approved. But um, we have, how many projects have entitlements on the on the west side there um by D Street and the Train Depot that remain vacant, but they have their entitlements? And they're, you know, unbuilt? Because there's quite a few, I believe, on the west side.
Uh, so we have um the Oyster Cove and the Haystack are the two projects that are kind of near near the station that have entitlements that I believe are still are still active. Um, and we have been trying to work with those those applicants to see if those projects are still viable for them.
And I know there's one at one thirty one Liberty, but I think there's an application.
That's true. One thirty one Liberty is also, that was a some apartments, some mixed use, some office on the ground floor.
I don't remember everything, but is there any on the east side? Like where Casa Grande, that development that was going to happen next to Casa Grande?
Well, there's the um two, the, yeah, the two, there's two housing developments on um Casa Grande across from the school um that are are entitled. Um, one is, I believe, cons- under construction or constructed. And the other one, I don't believe has pulled building permits yet, but that one was before you for the um, the the issue with the bridge over the creek that the council grappled with um on that one.
Right, but there's no other on Casa Grande, the one next?
There's one at the at by the Rocky Dog Park.
Okay.
Um, is another apartment complex. I can't, I can't guarantee the date of those entitlements and, but they're stock of, okay.
Okay, so there is projects, but they just haven't been built.
Or they're in the process.
They're in the process.
Isn't that about three hundred units, that apartment complex?
Okay. Um, but the Casa Grande site, I was on the planning commission, the one that Councilmember Shribs was describing. I don't remember the pipe issue, but I think the recession happened and that developer it just gave up on that project. But it was going to be single family homes, um, very dense. And it was going to be a wonderful um first time home buyers opportunity. And we were looking at like teachers and hospital workers and police and fire employees and city staff to purchase that, those um, that housing opportunity. But it never got very far because of the recession. Um, moving over to Leghorn, um, that shopping center has a lot of turnover. And in talking to the business owners, they claim it's because it's so close to the junior high, that they're being terrorized by the students that are leaving the school um and going through the, it was G and G market, now it's Safeway. So if we put in a mixed use in there, I don't know if it's going to improve it, but it would be more eyes on the um situation and what's happening. And I know that it is also happening in the park close by. So um, we have to think about that when we think about housing next to schools, especially the high school and the junior highs. So it's not a really good fit and um, I don't know how to improve it. But maybe somebody professional could figure that out. And that's just my questions. Thank you.
You know, I just wanted to add, I think we have an uh formerly entitled project across from McKinley School, but I don't know whether they've retained it or let it go, you know, a dozen apartments. And so they they managed to get all the way through. So there's, there's, there's things out there that people get entitled to never build, unfortunately, yeah.
But I'd love to know how much property and how many housing units we're we're missing out on because they weren't built.
Because the market was so bad.
Right.
Um, Councilmember Kate Thompson, you good? Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I think the other reason, the market conditions are can be bad, but also if things are just marginally cost effective and then the market conditions change, I think that's why we want to promote flexibility. Um, so just gonna, you know, do my recap again. Um, over the last twenty years, we've actually seen the slowest growth rate in Petaluma since the nineteen forties. Um, I sent a message to council on this. Um, from nineteen sixty through two thousand, we added about roughly ten thousand people every decade. Um, from two thousand to two thousand ten, thirty five hundred from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, two thousand. So um, we start talking about like we're growing too fast, like in the context of Petaluma as a city. Um, that just isn't what's what's happening. Um, but what has happened is uh over the last twelve years, we've seen housing prices grow by about two hundred and forty eight percent. Um, so when I think about the things that are changing in Petaluma, um, and the problems that I'm trying to solve as we think about land use is trying to make the place more affordable for regular middle class people that want to start um a life here. Um, and so I'm, that's like a big lens that I look through when I think about this. Um, so I do have questions though. Um, on the bowling alley site, um, I'm wondering how like, as a guy who goes bowling, still likes to go bowling, I I think there's few options for affordable family fun in our city. And um, if someone were to redevelop that site, I fear that we would lose another affordable family activity. And so I'm wondering what we've done to like think about as um, like, like tools, development incentives, things like that to try and, you know, as we develop that property, you know, continue to have something there, you know, like whether it's like a bunch of housing units on top of a, you know, bowling alley, like I, I mean, that's what I would love to see, right? But like, how can we make sure that we don't just um, like, I'll turn this all over to the market and we lose out on the the things that, you know, because there's also, there's a whole community there, right? Believe it or not, like bowling alleys are kind of a melting pot of America. And um, if they don't have a place to to gather in Petaluma, they, you know, we lose them. So I'm just curious what we've, how we've sort of approached those sort of unique land uses that are really sort of like community hubs in themselves.
I I think that's a fantastic legitimate concern. Um, I'm not sure there's a a guar- a way to guarantee that the use might someday convert, but my guess is, and I don't, I don't, I've never bowled there, so I don't know how well it's used, but it sounds like it's a very well-used community resource. And so it sounds like the landowner likely wouldn't have a strong incentive to change the use and instead complement that use with other complementary um development onsite, whether it's housing above or elsewhere on the site. Um, I haven't seen it at its peak use. I don't know how much room there is in the parking lot potentially for horizontal mixed use infill development. But I would think that there, they'd look at lots of creative options to to diversify the use likely before completely converting it to a different use. Again, I don't, not knowing the exact nature of that site, it's hard to speculate. Um, but they're difficult, it's difficult to guarantee the retention of a particular use. I should, I could add though, that there are growing number of examples nationwide where valued community resources are are in different ways taken into, uh, the community takes them into their own hands in different forms of community ownership and control. This is done often for grocery stores that are uh threatened to be lost. Um, I can't, don't see why the same uh community-driven approach couldn't be taken to a bowling alley as well if there's that much um public uh support for a valued recreational asset.
Councilmember Barnacle, it's also something, it's a, it's good feedback, and I had it on my list about specifically about grocery stores because we've talked about that, not wanting to lose our grocery stores, wanting to have flexibility, but not wanting to at the expense of losing those because they're such a vital component of a healthy neighborhood, um, having access to food. So it is something too we can take back and talk with. We have two economic um subs on the general plan team and take back and, you know, as things that have come up and looking for creative ideas or uh industry, you know, things they've used in other jurisdictions and.
Yeah, I guess maybe this is just like a, something to add to the general plan or zone like policy or something around, um, you know, I like, we want to tag those community uses that that serve a a use that's greater than the market itself, right? Um, and I think for me personally, that's the bowling alley. So um, uh, so that's, that's one thought on the bowling alley. Otherwise, I do support the uh the proposal for the area. Um, next one on the Creamery is, have we spoken to that landowner? Um, just curious.
I do not believe we have, no.
Okay, I'd suggest we talk to the landowner there and just make sure. Um, I was shocked to get the the letter from Hutton Barons. And so I want to, you know, with that one being in um a less operational state currently than what we, um, what we have there, I would just like to talk to the landowner. Um, on Casa Grande, uh, I had some of the similar questions as Councilmember Quint around um why we chose, but I think I understand that. Um, what struck me though was that some of the like nearby parcels were not touched. And so the ones that stuck out for me were the um, there's like an R two parcel at the end of Caulfield and Cronella. There's an R two parcel at the corner of Casa Grande and South McDowell. These are pretty sizable parcels that um feel like they should be addressed as something, not R two, right? I think R two is like six thousand square foot lot, right, something like that. Um, it seems pretty big when we're trying to drive toward affordability. Um, and so I don't know if we're, if there's like another venue where we're going to be tackling some of these like, I mean, R two in particular is the one that stands out to me because it's just such a huge lot size and we um, we miss it. Um, but those two lots, um, and then there's this other like little city-owned parcel that sort of abuts the the Casa, the Petaluma City Schools owned piece on Cronella that I've driven by and it's like just sort of an open space. And um, I've often thought like that could be like the, can the east side raise, right? With like a little, you know, we've got the school right there. You've got plenty of residential to support weekends and things like that. And I just, so I guess I'm just looking at that and I'm saying like, that's one big parcel, obviously, that's an opportunity site, um, but the whole area hasn't really been rethought. Um, and so I'm just wondering if someone can explain, was that intentional? Or, you know, what am I missing on that?
I don't think it was intentional. I think it was, you know, early on, we started really honing in on areas of change and then remained pretty focused on those unless things came up um that kind of said, well, wait, let's, you know, whether it's through the general plan advisory discussion or a neighbor coming out and saying, hey, well, I'm right here and I would love to be part of this, that kind of, or something came up at a community outreach. Um, so I, I'm, I'm, you're one step ahead of me. I can't like picture those parcels off the top of my head, but we can look at them. But um, I think that's, that's probably where that was focused.
Got you. Um, I would say R two in general, like looking around at the R two land use is a pretty ripe opportunity to try and bring that down to two thousand square feet or something like that and see if we can get more affordable by design. Because if we have six thousand square foot lots as a minimum lot size, we're going to see a lot of big homes and that's again, not hitting our affordability targets. Um, Leghorn, I don't have super strong thoughts of, other than I'd love to see some housing there. Uh, the Washington Square, that was one, like I, I understand the the reason for the the step back commercial. And at the same time, like, it's hard to find better access to parks, our senior center, two elementary schools there, like four baseball fields, right? I mean, at least if we're going to transit centers, multiple transit hubs, right? Like, if if there was an area to try and increase the density on, it feels like that's the place where all like a huge number of amenities are. And so um, you know, when I thought of all of them, that was the one that sort of jumped out at me. It's like, you know, there's, you know, a ton of grocery stores and pretty, a a new health center there, right? Like, so um, I'm just wondering, is there, is there a reason why we wouldn't want to create more flexibility on there? Other than you, the reasons you already said. So I guess that's a question of the council of like, isn't that a place where in the future we want to see more people living um right next to transit, right next to parks and public services and things like that?
You're on Leghorn.
I'm on Washington Square. That's the one that for me, like, if there was any of them that that jump out, Washington Square was the one where it's like literally everything is there um to have a a walkable life if we redesigned it as such.
Councilmember Shribs?
Okay, just a, a couple of quick comments. Um, talking about Leghorn and we're talking about adding in residences, like I really practically, I really can't see that actually happening after it, now there's built, unless the buildings are already structured so that the stores are down below and they've already been architecturally set. So you can just add to the top of those buildings. If that's the case, then yeah, we can add something on top, but I can't see any buildings being removed and another building put in place that's much larger doing things. It's a small, fairly small site, it's already an operational shopping center. So I don't see that as a practical basis, but I think Leghorn really needs is much more service-oriented and community-oriented spaces um rather than residential. So I could see a a city center, a city uh desk there. I could see a a satellite, like we have PlayStation, a satellite on Perrin could be, because that area is missing services areas, it's all residential. So that's a higher need than residences on that, because there's housing all around it. Right behind it, there's large apartment complex. So that's on Leghorn. On the Casa Grande site, um, I'd be against hundred percent residential. We want that to be a community hub, not more totally hundred percent housing. So I would say demand, not allow, demand mixed use on that site myself. Uh, we want that to be a um, a community center area. So mixed use for sure, um, but it has to be a combination, um, not not allowed that much flexibility on that site because someone's going to come in and want to just do housing on that site next year if that's what we do. Then on the um, on the bowling site, uh, I agree with Councilman Barnacle, uh, the the bowling alley is is useful, but it's an empty parking lot. And actually, it's the parking lot that really need to develop, not that building. But the property you identified just just south of there, um, probably not even the Memorial Building unless someone was to take that building completely down and redo it. But that property next to it, I think, thank you for identifying, I didn't realize that that was an opportunity site. So I would put hundred percent effort into transforming that basically um very low residential zone right there as as the biggest real opportunity for development because if a developer is going to look at, I'd rather start with blank vacant land than something that's got a big structure on it already uh on that one. So, but I just wanted to add those those comments in. And then also at the um, both at Target uh parking area and over at Washington Square, we have um empty, couple of empty spaces and lots of blocks of parking. So trying to put um services in those areas too, whether transit service or city services, um, that those might be appropriate there also. So I want to make sure that that are, that we as a city are also looking at developing our own services in those areas also. So those are just the extra comments I just want to toss in.
Yes, those are great comments. I I think what I'm going to note on that is there is a need as we're um planning for the next twenty five years as I think there's an important um factor that we should be considering, which is um city services, right? So I think there's a much more focus, okay, based on the additional projections, what's the level of new service, right? I think we've heard about even like a library right on the east side. I think that's something that um has come up in the past. Um, so I think absolutely we can look at it um in the context of what the new general plan projects and what uh other amenities may be required and then come up with some creative solutions, whether it's Leghorn, whether it's uh the J C's right there, maybe there's some sort of joint um facility use partnership or something um that we can look at, but noted. I I would suggest, Mayor, though, at some point, um, as different ideas are going back and forth, we may want to consider straw polling some of these just so we can get some direction this evening.
Right, I think focusing some of the conversations is a good idea. So let me ask one focus question. If this city's general plan projects a growth. If this city's general plan projects a growth, what step or stage, when do we talk about city amenity, whether cities requirement to, to stand up that populace of a city?
Just so I understand your question correctly, you're asking how we're, once we've agreed on a growth projection for the city, in part influenced by the change in land use designation, how are we accommodating for the necessary, maintaining the same level of public services, facilities, et cetera?
Yes, perfect.
So, um, so that's addressed in the, I got too many general plans, um, public facilities element in many respects, specifically calling out for maintaining, uh, similar or greater levels of service. Also applies to the parks, um, policies that have similar.
Is that iterative to land use that will do land use? We'll see what it means to the rest of the sections. We'll iteratively come back and say, well, something has to happen on city facilities?
I'm, I'm not, we'll have to, I'm not sure exactly how specific we'll get. Yeah, so, um, in the general plan, we may not get that specific about specific facilities required. Much of the general plan calls for subsequent, more detailed functional plans that would identify specific facilities needing different parts of the city because part of the question is geographic. And then the general plan also informs this update to the city's Nexus fee study, which in turn would result in a change or update to the impact fees, all of which then provide the resources necessary to.
Do you need to protect land for this? Is any zoning cover? If you find you need more facilities, is there a zoning that covers it or can that be accommodated later?
There's a, I have to, we call it public.
Semi-public, yeah.
There's a designation specific to public facilities, yeah.
But when would you apply it to land? Would you change a commercial place later and say, well, we need some public land?
To the extent that we know there are specific sites that should be preserved for that use, now is the time to do that.
Do you have a specific type of public facility?
Well, we were just mentioning, we were mentioning an alternate police station or another facility, you know, um, a city hall with capacity for greater employment, um, employee, um, efficiency, these, these kinds of things. Will something show up during this general plan conversation that shows that the city needs to have more structure and capacity for the new city?
Yeah, we will be looking at that. We will be looking at different facilities, maintaining a certain standard of living. There's lots of different ways that can happen too. Doesn't necessarily, I mean, we do have, the city has a, a, an amazing centrally located piece of property to serve the community. There's also other ways to do it. Sometimes those things like council member Shribbs was talking about, like a police substation, it might not be a substation like you think of it. It might be, you know, a ground floor office space in a, um, shopping center that goes in.
Santa Rosa is putting a police station in the mall.
It does, right. It doesn't have to be, um, a parcel because we also, you know, there's other issues that come up. If you go and look at a private piece of property redesigning it for public semi-public, we're going to have different discussions. So we do have a number of city owned, um, properties, you know, the property we're all sitting on right now is another amazing property. So, um, that will, that will be part of the conversation and making sure that we're not planning for change without the, the quality of life and the public safety and the.
And thinking bus yard, things that can't be co- co-located, things like a bus yard would be kind of trickier. Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, the bus yard is the one that always comes up for me because like that doesn't feel like the ideal place to have a bus yard. The, also note that our current general plan says that we're going to have 72,000 people this year. We have less than 60,000 people. So, um, like we've got, like our current general plan has planned for this and that was planning for a lot more water usage, right? We've seen a huge amount of hardened water savings and things like that. Like, um, when it comes to, you know, water and wastewater capacity and, and things like that, like, um, I think we've got a lot of that stuff covered. I, I would, when we get to it, I would love to hear from the general plan. I saw some of them wanting to, to say something too. So I just wanted to flag that.
All right.
One, one final note on your question, mayor. And then most cities, and I haven't checked the, the municipal code for Petaluma specifically, but most cities and allowing most zones, public uses with, with this idea in mind is that like recognizing that a need often arises and to retain maximum flexibility for the city government identifies, identifies science that allows public uses in most zones.
That's exactly the answer I was hoping for, I guess, that flexibility again. And, um, we mentioned outreach, um, in, in, in that the general plan is a vision and, and it's about housing and affordability and livability. And I would love to start every public outreach with that sort of context and the note that Councilmember Barnacle men made about how little we've actually grown and the consequence that has on affordability, availability for everyone. And, um, to that point, did the G-PAC have a comment they wanted to make on this section before we move on to the next section? Please.
Hi, good evening, council members and staff. I'm Ally Gaylord. I've, I've been serving on the general plan committee for the last four years. Um, and I just wanted to provide a little context in the, um, conversation at, at the G-PAC level on the Washington Square Plaza and Plaza North and South, um, discussions. As staff had mentioned, there was a lot of discussion about how, uh, these sites should be intensified. And I think there was a lot of, um, support for what was shown as, uh, alternative to major town center, which, um, would have provided the, kind of the most intense use and included the designation of T 5.5, um, on where the Washington Plaza is, which is where the Safeway is. That designation, and I think the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, is that has been deleted from the potential land use designations. And so I think there was some work at the staff level, um, that then the, the G-PAC saw something kind of a little bit later that was this, um, recommended alternative now with, um, the step down mixed use on Washington Plaza and Plaza South. So it, just to kind of sum that up, I think there was a lot of support and maybe the community outside of the G-PAC wanted a little bit less intensity, but I think that wa, for exactly the reasons you stated, Councilmember Barnacle, the Washington, um, Square would be a really great place to do some of that higher density, perhaps the T five designation with the four, uh, the step down to four stories where appropriate. And I also wanted to mention that like really in existence on the, I guess you could say it's like the eastern edge of that Safeway property, it really doesn't back up to housing at all. It's all commercial, then there's a creek and then the, the only housing that backs up to on that east side is actually three story apartment buildings. So to step down to three story at that location doesn't make a lot of sense, but stepping down to four story could, and that would give the rest of the property a lot more, ability to, to vary and be a different sort of mixed use. Is there anything else that, okay, I think that's it. Thank you. So I mean, I guess maybe consider, um, increasing the density on that, um, recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to try and straw poll and see what we, you know, heard and could coalesce ideas on this. And let me know if this is going to work for you. You've got a listing of nodes. I thought we'd touch on each node and, and ask what you heard that varied from what you proposed. And, um, so the, the first one would be the bowling alley and vet center. Not sure that we had anything that varied from what was proposed. So you heard all our comments, but we're in support of what's proposed. The next one is the Western and Baker area. And, um, there was more discussion on that about not, not kind of pushing it, but, um, did anyone have a modification from what was in staff's proposal? Councilmember Barnacle?
Well, just to proactively reach out to the property owner, I think that's the, the big thing.
Exactly.
This is going to sit there idle for, you know, years. I don't, I would prefer that we are proactive.
And then the Casa Grande Center, there was, um, quite a bit of conversation. I think there's one question I had, council member Frids suggested, um, requirement of mixed and it's zoned with standalone residential, okay, standalone, commercial, okay. Is there a zoning, it might be appropriate that, that does not allow standalone? And then council might want to talk about whether that's a good idea or not, but, but first, is there a zoning that does that?
So a land use designation.
Yes, thank you.
Standalone residential is not allowed in downtown mixed use, which is really kind of at, at the core of the center of town. It's also not allowed in the urban core mixed use. These are generally the areas that we have wanted, um, that, that more traditional mixed use, um, that's close to the station, that kind of, that kind of thing also doesn't allow standalone. So the, the, I think, is it neighborhood center mixed use? Is that what Casa Grande is proposed as? That does allow standalone residential under is currently.
Should also add that because it's identified as a housing element site, HCD would argue that you cannot require a mix of use. You must allow standalone residential.
So the question remains, how do we achieve our goal of 15 minute without a, a land use designation that, that allows that? Councilmember Barnacle?
I would, uh, I have here that I was going to ask, like, one way that we could get to that is to look at the other parcels that I called out, right? The neighborhood commercial where the, the little commercial center there on the corner, the R two corner, like those are also opportunities where literally right down the street from the Casa Grande parcel. And we could get to that same sort of 15 minute neighborhood concept by including other properties in there and potentially looking at rezoning them.
Councilmember now?
I just want to do a shout out for that little marketplace on Casa Grande and McDowell. That's my pizza parlor, my nail salon, my vet, my cleaners.
Belfour.
And there's a little tiny Mexican market that has the best produce. So I, it's already a 15 minute. And then we also have Belfair there and there's a little, um, mini mart.
I agree with that. I think it is a 15 minute neighborhood.
And there's the best sushi, Petaluma sushi. So I just want to shout out that I, I could ride a bike there.
Hey, all right.
Mayor, can I add something just for consideration? The Casa Grande site currently only allows residential and we are proposing changing it to a mixed use that still allows residential, but also allows it to be other things than just residential. So we are actually encouraging it, we're, we're, we're taking it closer to what we're talking about, but if we like.
It's that opportunity thing again. You're creating the opportunity. Councilmember Quint?
Yeah, um, so, you know, I, I would like to advocate while I very much would like to see some kind of business that, um, you know, would allow people on that side of town to walk to it, to provide something for, uh, high school students and so on and so forth. I think that would be great. I also wouldn't want to lose an opportunity to put housing there if, um, you know, if, if we had a good, uh, a good proposal, so.
Certainly this provides the school district with the greatest opportunity. Councilmember Shribbs, you okay with where we landed? So, um, we'll move from Casa Grande to, to Leghorn.
Actually, I have a comment.
I'm sorry, please.
I'm actually was surprised that we weren't talking about that shopping center because we did talk about it at another meeting. And so I'm surprised that's not incorporated because it really is a 15 minute neighborhood with that. And, you know, and I kind of wonder, you know, when we talk about mixed use neighborhoods, you know, it's confusing about what mixed use really means. Like Deer Creek was supposed to be a mixed use, but there was no housing. And so it just seems like it's a great term to use, but what are we really going to get with mixed use? And it seems as though we can just get a mishmash of what we really don't want. So just throwing that out there.
Okay. Leghorns, um, we were pretty solid that already created a, a lot of opportunity and this proposal only added opportunity to them. And then, um, Washington Square and Plaza, we had a lot of conversation there. But I think the greatest opportunity is in what's the staff proposal? Okay, there's your straw poll. So.
I, I, that was the one that I had a note, mayor, to kind of ask for.
Specifics.
A little more clarity because I, um, heard a couple of council members say this might be the place that we actually maybe want to increase to the, um, uh, what was, I think the T 5.5, which now I think that would be the urban corridor mixed use. So using that urban corridor mixed use across all three of those parcels was something that I heard a couple of council members bring up. So that is one I'd like clarification on if we want to go to something that allows a little more density and a little more, um, massing, um, as, as an opportunity.
Councilmember Kater Thompson?
Treat all those sites equal because they're basically shopping center sites. There's not really much of a difference. And yet there are homes across the street from Plaza South, but it just seems as though you can do more density even in that shopping center. And I, I just treat them all equal. And then with Plaza North, I mean, there's a lot of land there that people don't realize that's in back of those buildings. And, you know, what an opportunity it would have been to have actually removed the Kmart building and rebuilt something because there's so much land in back of that building also. And there was a lot of opportunities and I just feel like we're really missing it just by putting, you know, three stores into an old, old building. And it's just unfortunate, but we just, I prefer to keep them all equal.
Councilmember now?
I just want to bring up the fact that in the past, what, five years, we at Washington Square, um, that shopping center had a lot of controversy about a gas station going into that, what is now a medical, an urgent care. And that is such a better use of that shopping center, that location. And there's a lot of objection when, um, that apartments, the new apartments behind Safeway were going in. So I'm just putting it out there that the neighborhood does not want to see any more apartments in that area. So I'm, I'm just reminding people that they don't want gas stations and they don't want apartments.
Thank you, okay. Anyone? I, uh.
I just want to make one comment and, you know, I remember that everybody was, you know, complaining about having those apartments. And once they were built, it was fine because it ended up being a really nice neighborhood compared to, you know, all these one story, uh, medical offices that were just totally outdated. And it really made the community, um, connect by having those apartments there, but that was not the discussion. Everybody was fearful of it. And so sometimes we can't be so fearful because eventually you're going to see that really interconnected all of those neighborhoods.
Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I'll just say I support the, the making it uniform with the T five. I mean, people may not want more, people are always going to oppose something going in next to their house. And at the same time, people are always going to benefit when they live really close to a Safeway. And so, um, that's why, you know, I support it.
So, um, we're using a little jargon here and I'd like to, for the audience and for me, to know what's, uh, the jargon's all about. So there, um, existing two different levels on Washington and, and Plaza South, Plaza North. And is T five the highest of those used or is?
No, so that's what I was just going to clarify. So as it's recommended, uh, it is Plaza North is urban core. as it's recommended, it is Plaza North is urban corridor mixed use, which allows five stories, up to five stories, step down to four when you're adjacent to a residential zone. And between 30 and 75 units per acre. The Plaza South and the Washington Square is proposed as step down mixed use, which is four stories stepping down to three, where indicated on the map, where you see those little threes. And is 20 to 45 units per acre. So if we were consistent, it's either being consistent with the step down mixed use or consistent with the urban corridor mixed use, which I think was to Ally's point, as an opportunity for an area to see greater, greater opportunity for intensity and density should it redevelop. So that would be changing and being consistent with all three of them to the urban core corridor mixed use. Is that correct, Ron? Okay. So that, that would be.
I'm gonna come down this way for a minute. Does anybody want to weigh in down here? Councilman DeCarly?
I, I just want to propose that we keep things, you know, neighborhood commercial and, and as their zone in areas that are. The discussion's funny to me because we're talking about, you know, changing the land use on areas that are arguably 15 minute cities already or nodes for them. Changing those to become housing and then other areas, changing those to become nodes for 15 minute cities. So I, I don't know why we're trying to flip flop things around like that. I think that, you know, areas that are zoned, neighborhood commercial should stay as such. And, you know, we, we should be looking at, at other places to do housing.
Okay. So if you're following at home alone, at home, it's slide 77 that shows the proposal from staff. And that's two dissimilars. That's the urban core and the SD. Step down. Thank you. And, and so the question is, do, do we need to conform those? I get what that does for us. I don't really have stomach for rising it more. I think at some point we've put enough opportunity in. I don't want to get over our skis. That's where I am on this. So. Yes, Councilmember Kater.
Where does state law play into this?
There is always the potential that state law could impact one. State law changes as we are constantly trying to figure out. It depends on what's proposed. It depends on what's requested.
If, is it SB AV 79 or was it 78?
79.
79? So could that be implemented and supersede what we're doing anyway?
So I think that SB 79 is a half mile radius from the station and I think this is outside of that half mile. So I don't think, as it's, and again, as it's currently written, as it's being considered to the best of our understanding at this moment in time.
Is it written for 15 minute headways or does it not cover 15 minute headway?
I think it's, it's only around rail is my understanding or at this point. So.
Okay, so it's not around transit. It's only around rail.
Rail. That's my understanding.
Okay.
All right.
Right, exactly. And it's, state law is a very difficult thing to sit in front of you and give you a, a well-informed response because it changes and we have to continue to pivot and understand as it comes at us.
So I've heard one piece of conversation is they should zone the same. My piece of conversation is I don't want to make it anywhere denser than it is. Who's got an opinion that can kind of bring that together? Do we want to raise it to all the urban core elevated level or do we want to leave it lie where it is? I need the help here.
I kind of like consistency and they're all shopping centers. They're all conglomerated around the same area.
You would wish to rise the other two to the level? And so is, is that the will of the council to rise the other two?
I would, maybe if, if we're gonna keep them all equal, I'd actually go with the lower amount myself, the five story instead of the six story. And that, that might work there. Or just if you're gonna separate out the six, just do the one. I don't think the six is going to be, I think the public's gonna start outcry if we say all six.
That's where I am, wasn't it?
So none of them are six. I just want to be clear.
So the thing we're choosing between is the urban core part and the step down part.
It's the urban corridor would allow up to five and the step down maxes out at four.
Oh, yeah, that's just fine. I thought that, that was one of the, we were talking about six stories now.
No, so we're talking, should we change them to all go up to five or should we change them to all go down to four?
It's five with the step down to four.
Yeah.
I, I think we should let things lie as you started to suggest.
Just, just to weigh in, my, my preference would be that we have them all be the urban corridor. But, yeah, I'm, it's, it's, it's either, yeah, my first choice would be urban corridor. My second choice would be as proposed.
Same. And, and Janice has already weighed in on that. And John, urban core five is yours too?
Yeah, I think on a practical basis, it's, we're just offering a lot more than what's already there. So I'd go with, anything's gonna work.
Are we including the Petaluma Boulevard north where the old Luckies is? Are we?
No, no, this is, this is strictly the two shopping centers on Washington.
I know, but would we, because I am not in favor of going denser and, and changing those two on the east side, but I am open to the one on the west side.
Okay, well, right now we're only worried about Plaza, Plaza South and Washington.
So I, I want it to stay neighborhood commercial.
Well, so the choices is step down, the four story one or urban core, the five story one?
Well, I think that I heard four members
Yeah, that's me too.
The council say that their first choice would be to make all three of them urban corridor mixed use.
Yeah, and.
And would that be 45 feet?
Urban corridor goes up to 60.
And the four who said they were urban core understood it was 60. And we're, I'd suggest we move on. We have a lot tonight, so.
I just want to be super clear because it's not urban core because we do have an urban core. It's urban corridor mixed use is what I think we're all talking about. Yes? Okay.
Appreciate you keeping me on target, the UC MU grouping. Okay, so that, I think, was the last of these nodes. Is that right? Okay, so Steph, any, any thoughts? We move into the next section. We're moving to the next section. We're moving into the hard section.
No, it's the easy section. If you could jump to slide 42, Heather. Okay, so well, thank you, council members, for that direction. Very useful. Shifting gears now to segment two, focused on the land use designation standards. Those are the development standards associated with the designations we were just debating about which apply or, which should be applied most appropriately in which areas in the city. And in your briefing book is a simple summary of the proposed designation standards on pages six through nine. This was mentioned earlier, but just a quick refresher. Each parcel within the boundaries of the urban growth boundary for the city has a land use designation assigned. And it provides the general provisions for mix of use permitted and intensity. And this is reflected on the land use map that is at the heart of the land use element of the, and of the general plan. And then as Heather mentioned earlier, the zoning code then is updated to reflect the designations specified in the general plan land use map. And this is all important because future development decisions, including specific plans, zoning actions, et cetera, all need to be consistent with the land use map within the general plan. So one of your attachments tonight, I think it's attachment four, is the, as Heather referenced earlier, the attachment that details the standards for each of the designations proposed for the updated general plan. And in that table, the underlined items and the bolded items identify changes either from the existing general plan or from the designations standards that were proposed in the draft land use element last summer. And again, really briefly, next slide, please. Heather, as Heather said earlier, all of this work that we've done on these is completely driven by the vision originally identified based on community input, drafted by the G-PAC and affirmed by city council. In the context of land use designation standards, that, that means we're making every effort to allow more dense infill development in the city core, near transit hubs and along corridors. Allowing for the integration of housing into existing shopping centers, as we just discussed at length. Allowing for a mix of housing choices, types, sizes and, and, and levels of affordability. And then maintaining an active ground floor where it, it makes sense and is feasible. So the land use chart evolved from the chart that was in the draft land use policy framework that went out for public review last summer. Proposed modifications have been in response to the public review, as well as Heather mentioned earlier, extensive discussion by the G-PAC over a series of several meetings. Should also note that over the course of your discussion of several of the areas of change throughout the city at the previous two workshops, you've already provided us some very useful guidance as it relates to the standards for the general plan designations. Specifically, you've already told us that you would like to retain the proposed new maker microbusiness designation, but you wanted to adjust some of the allowed uses and the allowed height. So we will make that change. You also affirmed that you wanted to retain the business park designation, so we are retaining that. You affirmed that you wanted to retain the four story maximum height in the downtown mixed use designation. And that you thought the up to eight stories that would have been permitted in the station mixed use designation was not appropriate and that the city should not create that new designation. And so we will make all of those revisions based on your previous guidance related to the standards. Not gonna spend a great deal of time on the details of these standards tonight. Just really wanted to highlight some of the most substantive changes from your current general plan designation standards. Changes proposed to the residential designations are generally limited to modifications to density standards in order to allow a slight increase in maximum density from what is allowed under the existing general plan. For instance, in the medium density residential designation, we're going from a minimum of 8.1 to a minimum of 12 and from a maximum of 18 to 22. Likewise, in the high density residential designation, going from 18.1 to 22.1 and from 30 to 45. These increases address community concern that lower density development has been, was being approved in cities limited available residential sites, particularly in key areas where people thought that higher density would be more appropriate. Next slide, please, Heather. An additional nuance for the residential designations was, is to more clearly identify the types of residential use that are permitted in each of the designations. And this is consistent with a policy in the draft land use policy framework, as well as program four of the housing element, both of which seek to encourage the efficient use of residential and mixed use land to facilitate, by facilitating the development of the upper end of the density range. And for increasing, increasing, establishing, excuse me, increased to minimum densities for multifamily and mixed use zones that will ensure the efficient use of the city's multifamily land. And so again, through extensive, extensive discussion with the G-PAC, we thought it was helpful to clarify as the chart on this slide shows the different types of residential unit type that should be allowed in each of the designations, moving from obviously the lower intensity types at the lower intensity designations up to the higher, corresponding with the higher intensity designations. So for mixed use, moving from residential to mixed use now, for mixed use, there were really three major adjustments made. And one of these we've talked about extensively already, and that's really the first one of aligning the mixed use designations in the general plan with those that already exist in the zoning code and the SMART code. Not gonna go into this in detail, but changes in state law have necessitated that we maintain pretty clear consistency between the two because landowners have the right to go with whichever has greater flexibility. And so it behooves the city to be clear about those in the general plan and then update the zoning code accordingly. So that resulted in an increase from what currently is a single mixed use designation in the general plan to what I think is currently seven. We had originally proposed eight and eliminated the station mixed use per your direction. And then related to that, but slightly different, we added a few additional new designations. And this is the second major chain change in response to community input. And we've talked a lot about each of these new designations already, so I'm not gonna go into great detail, but that includes the step down mixed use, which allows a greater intensity, but then accommodates the, the neighboring uses by requiring the step down. The urban corridor mixed use, which we just discussed at length and its applicability in, along major corridors in the city. And then the flex, which we've touched on some, designed to be a potential option for some of the historically agricultural or industrial sites that would allow nearly all uses with the exception of heavy industrial. We aren't currently proposing any site where that would be the designation, but we wanted to create it to allow for that flexible, the flexible use in the future. The third and, and final major adjustment we made with mixed use was to be very clear about where the active, an active ground floor is required. Again, this is based largely on extensive G-PAC discussion rooted in what many perceive as a lot of confusion currently about how when people hear mixed use in Petaluma, they tend to assume that it's required ground for retail with residential above. And so they thought it was important to clarify that that shouldn't always be the case. And so they went into great detail identifying, and you'll see this in the chart, where active use should be required. They also greatly expanded the definition of that ground floor active use from what currently is, is largely oriented towards retail to expand it to a variety of uses that result in active ground foot traffic, traffic, ground foot traffic throughout the day. And that could include retail, but also other types of services, coworking, gym or fitness facilities, childcare, libraries, other types of community space. But not including uses like offices where people largely are coming and going just at the beginning or the end of the workday. So all of that great G-PAC input is, is reflected in the specification. I think it's in the final column of your mixed use designation table identifying where and of what, what's, what intensity and active ground for use is required. So what would be most helpful from the council this evening is feedback specific to some of these major adjustments we've made in these various types of designations. We know there's a lot of questions have come up and I'm sure we'll discuss them tonight about the kind of the specific numbers, the quantitative nature, some of the specific, you know, minimums and maximums and some of the FARs. It's difficult for us to commit like just tonight to like the fees. It's difficult for us to commit, like, just tonight, to like the feasibility of some of those adjustments. What we'd like to hear is like, that you'd like, maybe do like to see a greater or lesser in a certain area, because we have to go back and do some calculations to confirm that there's kind of internal consistency between the minimum-maximum density, the heights and the FAR, to make sure it all works together nicely and allows for feasible development. In that spirit, we do anticipate that there may be some changes in the quantitative standards based on all the feedback you've given us over the course of the three workshops. And so, when they come back to you in a few months, don't be surprised if there's some tweaks and adjustments. One good example is the downtown mixed-use designation, where the FAR is currently three. We've looked at it more closely recently, and we think it's likely possible to move that to four, which would allow for a lot-to-lot development, up to full four stories, as is sometimes already seen in the downtown area. And so, that's one example of where we already know, we think we might make an adjustment in the standards when you, when we return to them, to you with them in the, in the fall. To help council members get a, and the public get a better feel for how these standards translate into the form of buildings, we put a lot of visuals in the briefing book. And I have some slides tonight that are larger, you know, higher definition, maybe a little easier to see, which I'm happy to run through. But before I get into those visual examples of what types of buildings would be permitted in each designation, let me pause to see if the GP team has anything to add to my quick overview of the major shifts in the residential and mixed-use designations.
Thank you, Ron. I think the thing that I want to impress to the council is, as we've been going through this process, we've really been focused on real examples that, that we run into, and where our current general plan may not get us where we think is where we want to go. And then, we'll pause, and we'll, what are we proposing in the, in the general plan update, and would that get us to where we want to go? And so, some of the things, like with Ron's reference to the FAR, some of the things around density, you know, we recently had a downtown property owner approach us about adding residential units on top of the existing commercial. And what our current code said was, well, you could add one unit up to, I think it was something like 4,000 square feet. And we said, well, that's, that's not the vision, that's not what we're trying to get to here, right? We want, we want residential above some of these existing commercial, but we don't want to incentivize, you know, a monster unit, you know, that we want to incentivize smaller units, we want to, you know, not, not increasing height over what's allowed, any of that. So, I just want to impress upon you that we are kind of really looking at the real-life examples as we're going through this process, and trying to identify where things aren't working, where things, where we need to build more flexibility in, so that we make sure it works moving forward.
Is there a few more slides?
We just have some visual examples of what some of the, what the building type
All right.
would, could possibly result through some of these. I can run through these really quickly. So, the first couple are examples that could be built in either the mini or the neighborhood center mixed-use designation, and this would allow up to three stories. And again, these are, the mini center designation is designed for smaller lots and largely single-family neighborhoods, where there's an opportunity to integrate some mixed-use, some local-serving retail perhaps, and the neighborhood center mixed-use, we've discussed already. And this is proposed to be used along parts of Petaluma Boulevard North, Petaluma Boulevard South, and East Washington Corridors, those sections that are intended or envisioned to be slightly lower intensity. The next slide provides some additional examples of different building forms, but all consistent with the standards of the mini or neighborhood center mixed-use designation. The next slide is our similar examples, but of slightly more intense designations, including step-down, downtown, and town center, all of which would have a maximum height of four stories. Again, downtown is intended primarily for the downtown areas, and intended to retain the form that you're used to seeing in the downtown. And we've talked about step-town, excuse me, step-town mixed-use and town center mixed-use as well. And these types of designations would be applied in areas near the SMART station, at the River Park, and in higher-intensity sections of some of the corridors that we've discussed, as well as, as we've noted just a few minutes ago, higher-intensity centers, like the plazas and the bowling alley and Veterans Center and Lakehorn. And I think the next slide is additional examples of similar, similar buildings that meet the same standards, but of different form. And then, moving on to the last set, this is examples of some five-story buildings, largely, I believe, in a mixed-use configuration, and this is what that urban corridor mixed-use designation would allow. This fosters ground floor activity with higher-quality pedestrian frontages. And this, this currently is proposed to be applied along the McDowell Corridors, we just discussed, near the SMART station as well. And I think the final slide is more examples of that same, that would conform with those same standards. And the final slide is, this would only be permitted in very close proximity to the SMART station, where it's already permitted as part of the central Petaluma-specific plan in the T6, T5, T6 zone. So, this, this is no change, just giving an example of might be, what might be, what might be possible in Petaluma.
Okay.
So, that, that concludes that segment, Mayor. And, and, you know, we're open to discussion of those specifics, but didn't have specific questions.
Yeah, sure, we'll want to come back and peek at some of those slides again, that's actually quite a collection of slides. And so, I'd like to open the public comment on this section, and I'd like the clerk to allow for that, and the audience well aware that this is their opportunity to come forward. I would like to invite Warren Dranit to come forward now. Thank you for staying with us to this hour.
Well, thank you all for the time that you have put into this, Mayor McDonald, city council members, and all the staff that have spent so much time working on this. My name is Warren Dranit, I am here on behalf of the Petaluma Area Chamber of Commerce. I serve as the Chair of its Government Affairs Committee. And I'd like to just start by providing a little background, at least as far as my comments tonight, or to try to put a little bit in context. As a chamber, we are an organization that is focused on supporting the business community. We're focused on trying to create a vibrant economy and to support a vibrant economy. We're not a land use organization, and so, that kind of overlays on top of that. We have spent a lot of time trying to track the general plan update process, we have participated and provided comments on other sections of the general plan update. And when land use came along, we recognized it as a very important part of supporting the business community and a vibrant economic element of the city. And so, as I start, we invited, and we were very thankful for Heather Heinz, Rhino, for showing up to one of our meetings. And we spent a lot of time talking about this update and all that's going on. And it's really a classic example of the more you learn, you realize the less you know. This is extraordinarily complicated, and it's really hard to figure out how to be, to create an understanding of what's going on, so that you can provide useful comments. You know, comments out of context, comments without really fully understanding the larger picture, I think can often be more damaging than useful. And as I've listened to the conversation tonight, it just reminded me how interconnected everything is. And so, we decided to focus on, on the land use designations as a place where we could potentially provide some useful commentary. And as we spent more time looking at it, and we really focused a lot on industrial, commercial, and a bit on mixed-use, and I will tell you that we do not, we did not come up with any specific changes or recommendations on how to change those specific land use designations. They seem to, there was, we didn't, we didn't identify a specific place where they, they appeared to be a problem. But what we did come to understand, and, and tonight's conversation has been really interesting, is this whole notion of flexibility. And I, and when I first started to come, when I first showed up here and I was planning to give comments, my, my, my thought was that I was going to be cheering on flexibility. And as, the comments tonight have all been focused on flexibility. And so, I want to applaud that, and I want you guys to continue to keep focused on that, because it seems to me that that's what provides the ability to adapt. One of the things that we have learned since the last general plan update is that there is, there is increasing acceleration on the velocity of change. And what we thought about back then didn't, doesn't, what we have now didn't exist then. Nobody was talking about artificial intelligence, nobody was talking about biomedical, and as I point out in our letter, no one's really talking about food trucks. I mean, so, I mean, the, the changes can be varied and vast, and so, trying to accommodate all those things is important. One of my concerns is, you know, we were talking earlier, that if the general plan designation does not accommodate a particular use, there is an entitlement process by which somebody needs to go through, but that's complicated, that's expensive, that's a deterrent, right? And what you, what we somehow need to be able to do is allow for that flexibility. Now, a lot of the conversation tonight has been on residential and mixed-use type of things. There's not been a lot of conversation on commercial or industrial, and I think that also needs to be part and parcel of that conversation, because we need to be thinking about how the land use designations are going to allow for these businesses that we, we don't know about now, excuse me, that we don't know about now, but will exist in the future. And they're going to have different kinds of demands, as far as what their setups are, what their needs are, as far as their use, and maybe in ways that we just can't imagine now. So, I, or my request, or our request is that, that we, that the city take a look at those areas, and take a look at how that flexibility is being incorporated into those places where businesses are going to need to set up and establish themselves. So...
Thank you.
Did I use, is that my three minutes? That's my six. My apologies.
No, no.
I'm normally better at paying attention to how long I've been talking.
No, great point, thank you.
So, thank you, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for the letter, as well. And we have Veronica Olson to speak.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just had a quick question about the designation for the Washington Corridor as you enter into town, and I noticed, I missed it the last time I was here, but it's designated as urban core mixed-use for a section of, of the space in Wash, at that Washington where, where you enter into town. So, my question is, what about the pedestrian experience for that corridor? If we're going to have these, you know, two very tall buildings coming into town, what is that going to feel like? So, I'm, I'm really want to raise the point that we can talk about all these densities and heights, but if we don't actually know what it's going to feel like, and have a way of visualizing that for our community, we're missing something, because it's, and the other, other part of it is extrapolating all this density and units, how much more are we actually attracting in terms of people coming to live here versus what our jobs-housing balance is going to measure up to for the people that are currently working here? And we haven't really talked about that, and I'd like to understand how that's going to be addressed. Thanks.
And if I may ask, while you're still at the podium, when you say entering town, do you mean exiting the freeway?
No, I'm, I'm talking about...
Washington?
Washington at, right before Petaluma Boulevard. There's a section on the map with dark purple all the way around, and I'm wondering what the, what the, I guess, idea was for that, versus keeping it all the same.
Yeah, thank you, I was just confused at the location you were referencing.
Yeah, so, it was, it was just, like, what was the thought behind that? Because if we think about the pedestrian experience from, from the station, and we're going up to 70 feet on Washington Boulevard and on D Street, and we're going to have stuff adjacent to it, what's that going to feel like? And I think we need to, you know, see if that's something that the community really wants to have, or do we want to go down a little bit and then go? I mean, I'm not an expert on the exact scenario, but I just wanted to pose that question to council. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a great segue back to the council, is that, you know, much as I appreciate the G-PAC's efforts to date, and, and their success and compromise on their, their work, and at this point, they're sort of advocates for the change, and council, as we get into this, and conclude our, our part right now, conclude our workshop and comments, we become advocates for the thing we decide here, the straw polls we take and the advice we give, we're moving into an advocate role for this general plan, and that's not to be overlooked. I would like to ask staff to address the comment about commercial-industrial. I know I toured White Industries, which is a bicycle part manufacturer, and I couldn't believe that that kind of machining and steel supply, aluminum tubing supply, I mean, just the heavy industry that happens inside of a warehouse was happening in Petaluma. And how does any of our effort affect what we consider our commercial or industrial base?
Well, much of that isn't proposed for, it will be a lateral change, it'll, it'll remain. So, really, the commercial that we've been looking at modifying has been in some of these areas of change. For instance, Lakehorn is currently commercial, and we just talked about changing it to a mixed-use to allow commercial uses, but also mixed uses. But much of the other commercial areas or industrial areas are not proposed for change from what they currently are designated. There will be some opportunity to perhaps refine permitted uses, that, that kind of stuff through the zoning code update for those areas, but there is not areas, there's not, you know, our, our larger concentration of industrial property, south on Lakeville, for instance, we're not proposing that to change designations.
Thank you. And I'll bring back up to council questions and comments, Councilmember Kater Thompson.
I just have a comment. The other night at the mayor's and council meeting, they were talking about what was going to be happening in Sonoma County and housing, and are we going to be, you know, what levels at what year? And so, I thought it was an important conversation, and it kind of segues into what we're talking about tonight, on development in our town, and being close to the SMART station, how many more people are actually, we're going to have more businesses in Sonoma County, so people are not going to be commuting out, is what I heard. And it seems like that's the theme, and, you know, with the SMART train getting to Hillsburg and then to Cloverdale, I mean, it's really going to change the way the economics is, and how we actually develop. And the Washington Corridor is extremely important, because it's next to the SMART station, and density is important. I understand, you know, what Ms. Olson was saying, as far as, you know, what is the pedestrian experience? I mean, this is, you know, what I know that I've talked about, just the Washington Corridor... I mean, this is, you know, what I know that I've talked about, just the Washington corridor. You know, you have these blighted properties up and down the corridor, and same with, you know, Petaluma Boulevard, you could say that in some areas are blighted. And it really is about, it's about the pedestrian experience, but it's also about the, we need to look, talk about the economics and where we're really going, and what is the projection for Sonoma County? And if more people are going to be live, working here, then we're going to have to have more housing next to our rail stations, but the Washington corridor is really important because there's a lot of potential there, and there's way too much blight.
You make a good point about the population, but also the demographics, the income, the ability to be housed in the community, that all factors into this. Councilmember Shribbs?
Okay, a couple of comments and questions, I guess. It's, I think the discussion so far is we're seeing that we're taking basically housing, increasing the density, that's what the discussion so far in this particular unit. But as was pointed out, we're not talking about all the other land uses. There's open space land uses. Is there a parking lot land use? Is there a park land use that we're going to be keeping and maintaining? And then a question came up on if we have a couple ag services in town that are taken care of, that have rail to these spots. The appropriate use of that line might be heavy industry, metallurgy of some sort, factory in those locations. That's a possibility. It has railroad, goes down the road 20 or 30 years now, we may have to have our own because we may not be able to get it from somewhere else like China, whatever. So for sustainability, do we want to include at least the possibility of ag service to heavy industry on those particular sites in case we need them 30 years from now? So that's just a idea to throw out there for the moment. I want to hear your support about the livability, as we're building, we're building up in all these corridors and everything, keeping it, making sure, yes, absolutely, the livability so that the design has to be appropriate for our livability pedestrians and bicyclists, that has to be mandatory part of the, when we're saying, oh, we can increase density, increase density. The other half of it is, okay, we're going to keep it still livable density, not just any density, okay? So I totally agree with that on there. And then the other one, next question was on, they're between rural, very low and low, basically they're all single family house on a piece of property. Do we have, are we going to have any with those designations anymore? Or is, are we going to actually convert and say every, we're not going to require only to be single family homes, every property can be turned into a duplex or quadruplex in the entire city? So how are we going to deal with those three designations? Is there going to be any of those actually left in our city limits at all? Or are we just going to say everything?
Okay, you want, we should go for an answer.
Yeah, let's go for an answer. Anyway, I'm just, one at a time if you want, or I can repeat, whatever. Those are things floating up in my head right now.
Yeah, great points and good questions. So to address your final question, state law has more or less answered that question for every city in the, in the state. So SB nine basically allows by right development of, up to four units on most residentially zoned, lower, lower density residentially zoned parcels. So in the three that you identified, rural residential, very low and low, up to those four units, it's much more complicated than that, but in simple terms, for all intents and purposes, there wouldn't be any remaining zones where you could only build single family residence.
Right, so instead of proposing that we're going to have those zones designated, why don't we just eliminate them if we can't have them? Why do we even have those in our designations?
That's a fair question. We just, we talked about that at length.
Okay, so one, this was something that has come up from the start, right? I think there's a number of cities across the country, Sacramento, Minneapolis, with this idea that, you know, let's abolish single family zoning. One approach that we found through this process over the four years is, in the state of California, there's enough incentives created through various state law over, you know, the handful of years that we don't need to go all the way to that. And essentially, I mean, we don't, I'd love to get a map up, but to your question about, you know, we're really focused on, and there's a intention around why we focus on a small segment of the areas of change, because everything else within the city is not being proposed to be re-designated in some way. So I don't want to, I can't show this map I have, we used to have the map up here, but it's all the yellow, right? All the single family development that has proliferated, you know, over, you know, throughout the decades, we aren't proposing to re-designate that to anything more because we feel based on the vision that the community has outlined for how we want to achieve and accomplish a 15-minute city, there are policies that we can adopt in the near term that essentially does what we're talking about, which is to, you know, to have the opportunity to build duplexes, you know, fourplexes, basically anywhere in town. But what you're suggesting, councilman, would take that even further to say, if there's a single family neighborhood, which, you know, we live in, we would, you know, this is going to limit that to say that there's not ever going to be single fam, so yeah, here's the photo, that's the map that's up, the purple outlines that are, you know, that's what we've been spending the last three workshops on, those are what's being proposed to change. All those other colors are being proposed to remain the same, and that covers everything, open space, park, public space, public facilities, commercial, industrial, you know, all really good points that have been raised both here with the council but also with the public around how do we strike that balance, right? The first big step that the council and the community pushed forward was our extending of our urban growth boundary. We don't want to go out anymore, we want to retain the city limits except for some expansion, future annexation, for really good reason, and we can address that at a later date. But really, we needed to grow from within, and that's where we kind of came up with.
That answers the question for you?
Sort of. I would want to propose what, what I've been learning from all the housing webinars I've gone to, that the number one way to change your system to get affordable housing is not larger buildings, not six stories, but pushing in duplexes, quadruplexes all over the place, everywhere we can possibly put it, in any lot that's going to have a, a, a single home removed and something else put in its place, is actually the biggest factor for getting affordable housing.
So let me ask, says a.
So I want to make sure that, anyways, what I'm suggesting is maybe we remove that zoning entirely, the single family zoning.
So can I ask, are you prohibiting single family dwellings?
Right.
Or are you, I mean, because obviously the state has allowed for duplexes, the state has allowed for junior ADU, all that lot split even, do you want to not have a single family dwelling?
That's what I'm recommending, is if we really want to advertise for a developer to come in to help us with affordable housing, we have to say advertise and say, hey, come on in, we're now, all our single family lots are now zoned as a possibility of duplexes and quadruplexes automatically, you don't even have to ask. And so we need to advertise that if that's what we really want to do to increase affordable housing.
Right, that's getting, we're going to do straw polling tonight on a variety of things, so why don't we?
Yeah.
Get a few more opinions from council where it's going, and then check with staff on legality of that and a few other tricks. Anybody else on council want to weigh in on that proposal? Did, Mr. City Attorney, did I see you coming out of the chair?
Excuse me, I was just going to note really quickly that this, the state law has already done that for us, and we won't distinguish ourselves by, by making that claim. What the mayor was, I believe, asking you, councilmember Shribbs, is if you wanted to go a step further and to not just allow subdivision of those lots of up to four units, but, but to set some kind of minimum or preclude the standalone, potential standalone units that we would now permit.
Correct, no, it's no more developments of single family homes.
Okay, so that's the proposal in front of the council.
Yeah.
You're asking us to define it as no single family dwelling on any lot in town. Straw poll, can I see a show of hands supporting that or wanting to discuss that?
So if, with that, with, if, if I'm a homeowner and I've got a, a house that I want to tear down and rebuild, would that preclude me from doing that?
No, I'm talking about any vacant lot that would be developed, that it's not to be allowed to be just single family homes. We have to do something more, and that opened the door for if you want to do, not required to be, like, replaced with a single family, but to advertise that we would encourage multiplexes.
Yes. I guess my only comment would be, I mean, there are several smaller lots around town, and, you know, and if there was a community member who bought one of those lots and wanted to build, you know, and if it's a, I don't know, 4,000 square foot lot, and they wanted to build a single home on that vacant lot, I don't know that I'd be ready to stand up and prohibit them from doing that. Ideally, I'd like to see more housing, but I don't want to prohibit a, an individual in our community from building a house on a lot.
Yeah, I agree. On an individual basis, I'm talking about like Casa Grande site, that someone would come in and just, okay, no, we're not going to allow single family homes only on that site.
Also, I'd like to point out that remember, like, the, the situation in which lots zone for single family units are subdividable, you know, basically little parcel maps, splitting them into four lots, those are still single family homes, single family parcels, there's just more of them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's more complicated. Do you see what I mean? So it's, it's not an elimination of single family units, it's, it's allowing smaller ones on a parcel basis.
Right, right now, I think for affordable housing, the, the number one issue is that we have 75% plus of our land designated as single family home zoning, and that the biggest thing we need, we need to change that zoning if we want to get anywhere, really.
To your point, council, council member, another strategy, if I'm hearing you correct, might be let's, kind of with a fine toothed cone, make sure there's no large lots, large vacant lots that are designated single family. So there's a big difference between, you know, much of the yellow that was in, on the map that Ron had up are existing lots, they're existing single family lots, they're not, they're not large lots where somebody's going to come in and build 25 single family home subdivisions, they're, they're a four, five, six, seven, maybe eight thousand square foot lot that has a existing single family home on it. And with the state law in place, they, they now can do a duplex, an ADU, a JADU, a, I think even a fourplex, and, you know, I don't know all of the, the size requirements off the top of my head, but there's more and more, and we have policies in the land use framework that talk about that and point to that, and that's part of the evolution of those single family neighborhoods. There's a difference, too, when you're looking at larger undeveloped parcels and making sure, okay, this isn't just one person building one single family home, this is a single family development. And that's why, one of the reasons when we were looking at it, and we took out currently, if you can have a single family home in the low density residential, you can have a single family home, single family homes in the high density residential is the way our, currently our zoning code is set out, and we saw some of those medium and higher density residential properties be developed with single family homes, and our code was permissive to that, so there wasn't much we could do. And so we heard that concern from the community and have looked to change that to make sure we're not having single family detached homes as a permitted use in our medium or higher density residential parcels, so that we're not.
Let's swing over here to councilmember Barnacle for a minute.
I like where you're going, councilmember Shribbs. I too, I sort of side with councilmember Quint that I don't think we want to prohibit someone from building a single family home, but it was just, God love ChatGPT, it helps with the, the complexity that you were talking about, Warren. And it gave me a side by side of how SB nine and what Sacramento abolishing single family zoning did, and what it appears to me is, is that it just gives, it makes it simpler, right? Like, you don't have to go through a lot split, you don't have to, like, pretty much it just makes it simpler to do that. So that's one thing I do think we should consider, especially if we're on our affordability kick, and like, we've spent three meetings talking about like, a few different areas of change, and that's like, you know, a small fraction of our entire city and the land that we have available to us. So I do support what councilmember Shribbs, where he's going at least with this. The other thing that jumps out to me is, I definitely want to see us like, like, bring our minimum lot size down citywide. I don't think that we should have anything over 1,700 square feet for a minimum lot size. That feels like pretty, pretty easy to do, and we, you know, we're starting to get down to, you know, when I was canvassing in my last election, a guy, I talked to him, and I said this, and he said, afterwards, he said, yeah, if you reduce the minimum lot size, it's from, you know, 4,500 to 1,700, you're shaving a hundred thousand to $150,000 off the sales price. And he was the acquisition specialist for KB Homes. I didn't know that when I went up and talked to him, but it was like, holy smokes, like, okay, there's a housing policy that I want to see actually implemented, especially when you look at how much R2 we have in the city. So I would definitely like to see us take on some of these things in, in the single family zone. And I don't have the perfect proposal, but that's what the zoning code's for, but I definitely don't want to just see us sit on our hands with it.
All right, thanks, Mayor.
In our current demographics, our senior population is looking to downsize to go from their large two-story, single family home to a one-story, ABA friendly and one level. And if it's close to transportation, that would be a plus, but that's what we've got to think about. For an example, just in my family, my sister and brother-in-law, they sold their 5,000 square foot large house, empty, their empty nesters, that was over by the airport in Turtle Creek, and they could not find a single level home new to buy in Petaluma. So they moved to Coffee Park, which is lots of little single family homes and lots after the fire. Their, my nieces, both teachers, they could not find a starter home, and they were looking at all the new housing developments in Petaluma and nothing fit. They wanted a single level, thinking ahead, two, three bedrooms. They ended up buying over by the Green Music Center in Runner Park, and they, there was incentives for new buyers and for educators or, you know, public servants, employees. So that's what we also want to think about is of starter homes for our employees, for our staff, for our teaching faculties, and for our senior population. So I don't agree that we need to eliminate single family homes because there might be a need. They don't want two to 5,000 square feet, two-story, you know, Jack and Jill bathrooms because they're only going to have one kid or two. So we have to think about what we want as single family homes and what the demographics is projecting, so smaller families and seniors.
Okay. Well, complicated. So the state has driven rules that show permissiveness to do all kinds of interesting things with what was single family, but what we're saying is we want to try and do something prohibitive to prevent you from not doing the, the, the more thing. something prohibitive to prevent you from not doing the more thing. And, and I agree, the goal is to decrease lot size and to decrease house size for me, for a price point issue. And there are probably several ways to skin that effort. And I'm not sure prohibitive efforts are my first choice. Incentivizing is a good choice. But, but finding the balance for how you define things, like state allows a lot split, and I think pretty much by right, so, you know, if you have a 5,000 square foot lot and you split it, it would not be impossible to incorporate Councilmember Barnacle's proposal that it be 1,700 and 3,300, assuming the remainder or the original parcel stays large-ish. I don't know if that one would be split at a later date, but, but at least the new house would come in at an affordable point if we chose to stay at 1,700, but we didn't, but we didn't say you can't build single-family. What we said was, you can do a lot split and it kind of leads you to affordability. So in any way to find affordability by design, I'm kind of inclined to vote for that. So can you help bring us around to a land use decision that we're trying to discuss tonight from what you're hearing?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is look to increase policies about streamlining process, reducing lot size, those kind of things in the zoning code.
Let me actually ask this in a different way. Is there an actionable thing tonight, or is this feedback for continuing discussion? And I'll go to Councilmember Barnacle first.
Yeah, my question, I keep thinking like we're, when I look at the density, like if a 1,700-square-foot minimum lot size is like 25 units per acre, if we apply that to all of our R2 where it's currently 6,000 square feet, like, and we get started on the EIR, the general plan EIR, and then we decide later in the general, in the zoning code update that we're going to make this change, and we are essentially what, like tripling the potential density in our R2 zone, right? Like, are we going to have to go back and redo the EIR? That's, I mean, that's my, my question is like, how much, like, do we have to set tonight so that you can get going on the EIR and be like, you know, moving forward on that? That's what we're trying to do ultimately, right?
Yeah, very good, very good point. Skamo, do you need to?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, you raise a really good, good point about, about this. You'll have to look at increasing the densities in the lower end of the residential range right now, because otherwise, as you said, it may be an issue in the EIR later.
Can we use the microphone?
Sorry, yeah. The densities in the residential range will need to be increased right now if we want to consider smaller lot sizes later on in the zoning code.
Could, could, could you say more? I didn't quite follow with that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having a slant.
Yes.
So currently, the residential zones, especially at the lower end of the range, have very low densities which require very large lot size, minimum lot sizes. And if the goal is to create smaller lot sizes later on, those densities will need to increase in the general plan so that they can be analyzed in the EIR and then later implemented in the zoning code.
Even though the state allows for that already?
The, what state allows through SB9 is a completely different way of incentivizing more housing. What it says, what SB9 says is you can take any lot and split it into two, as long as each lot is at least 1,400 square feet. So it doesn't necessarily, it allows for those lots to be split. It also allows for every lot to have up to four units built on it, so two duplexes each, or a combination of duplexes, junior ADUs, and primary units. So you can get up to four units on a lot using SB9. But the lot split through SB9 is limiting in how it's done. You can only lot split once, so if you have a big lot, say a 10,000-square-foot lot, you can only split it once using SB9. But if you have a minimum lot size of, let's say, 2,500 square feet, then you can have four lots on that 10,000-square-foot lot. So it has some advantages, but it also has some limitations.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCarly?
I'm just wondering, are we thinking about this in any specific context, or is this just some thoughts out in the ether, you know, about, about single-family homes? You know, I think we're, I think that's probably a much more complicated thing than what we could discuss tonight. I mean, we're, you know, we could be talking about what's an unintended consequence. You could have somebody purchase a lot or a Victorian home somewhere and then want to tear down a Victorian home and build something in its place. And I don't think any of us here want that. I mean, that's part of the character of Petaluma. You know, one of the things that John brought up that I've, I've talked about before is, on a different subject, is, you know, preserving industry, be it ag or whatever, along, along the rail corridor. And I think that that's worth a conversation because it is such an important mode of transportation. It's important to smart. They need freight, you know, and, you know, we can't just be so focused on housing that we forget where's everybody going to work someday? You know, ideally, they're working here in Petaluma, and I think that helps a lot of our goals across the board if people are living and working here. You know, I also, I wanted to revisit the Makerspace designation, and, you know, based on the last meeting, I think we stripped it down to pretty much the business, business park designation, with one of the big difference, with the big difference being that, you know, with business park, you could have an FAR of three, but that was only with structured parking. That's no longer the case. You don't have to have any structured parking along with it, but you still get that increased FAR. So, you know, parking's always such a big issue in Petaluma. I don't think the community is going to be very happy if we're, if we're not paying attention to that, if we're kind of essentially waving, getting an echo. If, if we're, you know, essentially waving parking in a way. No, it's just getting worse and worse and worse. Testing, testing.
Is, okay. Okay, just a point of order, it's past 11. Thank you, excuse me one second, we'll do a procedural effort here, and I'd like a motion to continue the meeting past 11.
So moved.
In a second. DeCarly is our second, and we're going to do this vote by a claim, and so I'll listen in favor of continuing past 11. Please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Thank you, motion passes. Back, floor is yours.
Thank you. So, you know, I have concerns about that, so I don't know if staff wants to address that before I go to my next question.
Is there part of that that we can deal with in where we are in our agenda and straw polling for this, this part of the meeting?
Well, I mean, the business park and the Maker micro-business designations are in the land use designation standards table. So if there's something that you want to make sure we change, we had noted, and don't forget that this doesn't show the changes that council has already directed, which I believe are reducing Maker to three-story and removing Hotel as an allowed non-residential use in Maker. We did have a conversation with the council, and council talked about the pros and cons of combining business and Maker, and I think there was feedback from the GPAC that really emphasized some nuances and differences between those two, and therefore the council decided to stay with the two separate. But if, if the council wants us to make additional changes to that, this would be the time to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the big difference, you know, at this point between the two. So, and again, you know, I think parking is very important to the community and everything that's built should reflect that.
Just to be clear on the 3.0 FAR with structured parking, that's no change from current. That's how the current zoning code reads, so we're not proposing any change to the business park designation.
No, it's not a change to business park, but what I'm saying is Makerspace doesn't require parking the same way that business park does.
It allows you, it's, so Makerspace will require parking in the, like, based on the uses in the zoning code. But I think what you're saying, Councilmember DeCarly, is the Maker designation, you get a 3.0 FAR just as the basic standard. Business park, you get a 1.5 unless you do structured parking, and then you get the 3.0. I think that's, that's, that's the difference.
All right, I'd like to bring back to staff for a second, and please.
Mr. Mayor and council, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose track of where we're getting in response to what Councilmember Barnacle was raising and what staff responded, and we can come back to Councilmember Carley's comments about the commercial zoning. But I think it's important to recognize what SB9 does and doesn't do, and what, and the point Councilmember Barnacle was raising was we better make sure that if we have a certain density envelope we want to be able achieve, that we are addressing it now so the general plan EIR addresses it, and we're not, and we don't have to redo environmental analysis. So I think that one of the keys is, and staff can help, help direct that better than I can, but that we, that staff have clarity from the council about what the upside.
Yeah, good point. Thanks for redirecting, for everything. And I'm going to ask if the whole council understands what that means in terms of the environmental work necessary. Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I just want to make the case for that too. Like, if we study it in the EIR, we can always back off, right? Because the impacts of this will be less, right? If we, if we decide we don't want to do it. But if we don't, you know, move forward with studying minimum lot, the small, like, lower minimum lot sizes, then we can't just like add that in because then the density goes up, right? So we can always reduce it. We can always increase the minimum lot size back up, but we can't just reduce it after we're already in the, in the EIR process.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we want staff to take a look at something, we're not approving something, we're not undertaking that thing, we're asking the staff to look at different, the exact proposal of no single-family dwelling and what the impact is, and what the difference between that and SB9 and other laws are, so we have the package together. And I assume we'd come back and visit on that before actually directing the study, or would staff be moving into study on that topic with this much guidance?
I apologize, I'm a little confused. Maybe there's two things that you're asking us to do. One I heard is, as you just said, potentially exploring, taking the route Sacramento and other cities have taken at eliminating, single-family isn't allowed use. But I didn't hear consensus from the council.
No, we're trying to see what the proposals. And, and I think.
I'm going to suggest that we reduce minimum lot size to 2,000 square foot citywide. That's the minimum lot size. That's what I would suggest we move forward with studying in the EIR process.
And that's, that has nothing to do with eliminating single-family.
Exactly, exactly. We're not, we're not, you can still, if you have a large lot, you can still build a single home on that large lot. It's just saying, like, we see, if we have a 4,000-square-foot minimum lot size, you're going to build a big home on that because that's a lot of land, and that's a lot of fixed costs that you're consuming, right? But if you half that, you can build two homes on it, and that's going to reduce the cost, the sales price. That's how you get entry-level homes, right?
So you could still have the very large lots.
Still could have the very large lots, and, and, and just to be clear, just because we study in the EIR does not mean that we're moving forward with that in the end of the day, right? We can still back off. That's a very doable thing if we decide that's a hill too far for us to climb.
Just one thing to remember is that with a 2,000-square-foot lot, you are eliminating the potential of SB9 application further.
Okay, I'll say a 2,500-square-foot lot.
Go higher.
2,800-square-foot lot.
Yeah, that, that is the minimum, so.
Let's do a 2,800-square-foot lot.
With the intention it could be split as an SB9 project? Is that what you're saying?
If we're talking about affordability, like, this is the way to get to affordability. So let's like intentionally study this and like put our money where our mouth is to the community that we're trying to bring about housing that is more affordable for.
And that would be done by a subdivision, or if it's more than two, you can, how would this happen? You know, 10,000, 10,000-square-foot lot, and you reduce it?
That's right. If you're using SB9, you can only split it once, but if it's a big lot and you go down to the 2,800.
So you're pushing things in the subdivision act, which is a complication of its own.
Yes.
2,800 square feet, that's very small though to begin with. That's hard to build on, I would think.
No, there's a whole mess of.
Well, there's the whole, you can do small lots subdivisions, which are, you can do zero-lot line subdivision, so you have every other, all the setback is on one side. You can do attached row houses, but these are also single-family, fee simple lots. There's a lot of different ways you can have small lots, but get to pretty high densities.
Okay.
And again, this is something that may be just allowed, but not necessarily required. So if someone has a 5,000-square-foot lot and doesn't want to change it, there's no reason to.
It's turning to Councilmember Shrebs, let's, let's hear in from Councilmember Shrebs, and we'll come back to her.
I was going to, I thought we were done, we were going to go to a new, similar topic at the other end of the scale, but when we're done with this one.
Let's finish the small end of the scale. Councilmember Quint, you had a comment?
I just wanted to share support for Councilmember Barnacle's proposal.
Thank you. And Councilmember DeCarly? We're there. So straw poll, I think, is what we're saying is you're proposing a, what's that number again?
2,800.
Twenty, 2,800 lot.
Minimum lot size.
As a study in the environmental document.
Yep. And just to be clear, you can't tear down historic buildings, Victorians, anything like that with SB9. It excludes historic buildings, buildings in historic districts, buildings that even could be considered historic, so just.
Is that registered only, or?
No, no, I'm looking at it right here, so.
Okay, so there's that part of it. We opening a.
Was that a positive?
That was consensus.
A majority?
Yes.
Wasn't consensus a majority to look at 2,800-square-foot minimum lot size?
June, I think the action was actually to bring it right into the environmental study. Do we understand each other that way?
So I think we're going to have to find, we're going to, this is part of what we tried to say in the staff report, is like, direction is good, and then we, it's our job to figure out kind of how to do it, to bring you back what, what you need. And so that's why you'll see some changes that maybe we didn't know to say right now because we're trying to take that direction and implement it, and once we all get into the.
Thank you. And is that the comment on single-family dwelling discussions? Thank you. Yes or no? Oh, done. Okay, good. We owe you some feedback on other topics. Can you touch on, or?
I think if there's any other directions around density ranges, we've talked a lot about height already through some of our conversations. we've talked a lot about height already through some of our conversations in the different areas of change. So I think we've, we've touched on that and the different varieties of height and so that massing. But if there's anything about the density ranges in here or anything about the standalone residential, commercial, any of those, those would be two things that, yeah, the FARs, if any of them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeCarly?
Talking about density, revisiting the downtown area and how we did the straw poll last time, did we increase the density in MU 2, right, in the downtown area?
Correct. Increase to 45 units an acre is what's, what's in here, is to, up to 45 units per acre, but didn't change the height beyond four stories.
Right, because I believe the council said four stories was enough.
Correct.
But, you know, I brought this up last time where there was a prior council meeting, and it was discussed that the limiting height factor with, you know, some of the SB laws was that it was our density, that we couldn't even go above four stories if we wanted to unless we increased the density. And so we've increased the density, now opening the door to going above four stories in downtown. So I think we should revisit that as a council and go back down to 30 so that we can't get it up above four stories.
And you're talking about the impacts of state law?
Yes. Right, because I forget if that was November last year where it was discussed. Councilman Barnacle brought it up and said that, you know, we can't do this because of the current density. We'd have to increase it, and now here we are doing that. So I think if we all want to preserve our downtown as it is and keep it at four stories, I think we need to hold the density as well.
Let me ask staff one other question. We have an overlay on the books right now for the downtown area. How is that integrated into what's proposed?
Great question, Mayor. So we have an overlay that, it's a separate process. There's going to be more to come, obviously, just with some of the changes. But that is very, very much focused just on the two blocks, right? The sub-area A, which just became the overlay area. So the MU 2 that's being proposed covers a much larger, essentially, the entire downtown. And so that's, there's, there's a difference between, you know, what the overlay may apply to versus where the larger land use designation would change, which would, what's being proposed at the moment is to go up to 45, keep it at the four foot or four story. I will also say, with or without these changes, even with what state density bonus allows with respect to concessions and waivers, this question about height isn't a new, wasn't new to the overlay? Isn't new to this process? There's always, there's always been provisions in the state density bonus law that if someone wanted to seek that additional density, whether it was at 30 or at the proposed 45, height is one of those development regulations. And so that is something that a project with or without these changes could access. And so there, this, you know, there was a lot of conversation about if you're bringing up an additional floor, is that going to bring things above five? I think just your comment about we don't want anything above four stories downtown. There's, there's some control that we have, but not much with respect to the state density bonus law.
Right, so if I could add to that, in other words, projects that qualify for density bonus and concessions are purporting to restrict that, is, as long as they're qualifying projects, which is going to be affordable projects, it's only, they will, they will have the benefit of, I mean, the reason it's called density bonus law is they can expand the density beyond what would otherwise be permitted. So it's the non-qualifying projects, the projects that don't qualify for density bonus that we can restrict. Does that, does that make sense? We can't, we can't restrict the ones that are permitted under the density bonus law. Economics does restrict those as a practical matter. But for qualifying affordable projects, we are.
And qualifying only means 15% are requirement.
Right.
And the density bonus is a 15%?
Well, there's, it's complicated because there's concessions and waivers that they can seek, depending on their affordability levels.
But the, the conversation way back when basically said that density bonus laws would not get housing above four stories in Petaluma based on the current MU 2 zoning with 30 units per acre. I remember that very clearly because.
I don't think that's correct from what we said.
Let's phrase that in the affirmative, that what does our MU 2 allow for? And, and since everything has affordable, affordable allowance in it, inclusionary, what does that mean for us?
So currently, the downtown has the mixed-use land use designation. It's generally MU 2 zoning. It allows up to four stories currently, and it allows up to 30 units an acre. So if you have a qualifying project under state density bonus, you could theoretically increase that density. You could theoretically ask for waivers and concessions that could allow you to increase the height.
Current?
That's, 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 right now, it's how it has been.
That's not overlay, that's current.
Yeah, that's not overlay, that's not any change. That's how it has been since the general plan was adopted in 2008.
Is this in areas of change? Is this conversation fit into areas of?
So what, what the feedback we got from the council was that there was not an appetite to be increasing the height in most of downtown to keep it at the four stories. So we have the downtown mixed-use land use designation for much of what is now MU 2. And it maintained the four stories. But another conversation we had with council was we're not seeing things get built even within that four-story massing that might be allowed in the MU 2. So, and we want to encourage smaller units within that envelope. And so we looked at increasing the density to 45 units per acre in that area. So that is what is on the land use designation chart.
That's a change we see.
Open for discussion.
That's a change we've seen since the early, since the beginning.
And I think it's helpful for the council to recall with respect to that that what we're talking about then are commercial projects and projects that don't qualify for density bonus. That's what we're containing.
All right, let me come down to Councilmember Barnacle and Vice Mayor.
There is a few drivers of this. So one, we were talking about area of change along Petaluma Boulevard North, and it was basically like one side of the street that was going to be all like four stories and 45 units. And across the street is MU 2, and it was going to be four stories and 30 units per acre. There was, that didn't really make sense, right? To have basically, you know, very similar building, you know, building makeups that are, you know, with one having, you know, significantly lower density. The second was, again, as Heather said, you know, the same shell with more units and it is going to make for smaller units that are, again, getting toward affordability. This is, you know, proven, right? Like, smaller units, more of them, you know, they make their returns. That's how development works. So this is, again, another affordability measure that we're trying to right the wrong of, I mean, we're dealing with housing prices tripling in the last decade, you know, like, or in the last 12 years. Like, if we continue to do the same thing, we can expect more of the same, right? This is our opportunity to try and change that, and that's what this was.
Okay. And Vice Mayor?
The current, the, I guess, Riverfront, Riverview on the Boulevard is brand new with mixed, it's mixed use with housing above it.
La Via? Is it at Oak on the Boulevard North?
Correct.
Correct.
I don't know why, it's probably the hour. Anyway, it's mixed use on the bottom?
Correct. It had a requirement for non-residential fronting the Boulevard.
But I don't even think that they, I think they're vacant.
Correct.
And we, and we did discover that the Eden Housing, which had on the Washington Street across from Golden Eagle Shopping Center, that it wasn't successful as mixed use. And we're, I think we're filling in with housing now in that mixed use area. So we have to relook at, maybe it's because it's not easy to get to. There's not a lot of parking. It's, but that Petaluma Boulevard North has a lot of potential. There's a lot of vacant or businesses that are getting older, and I can see them retiring out and selling. And we need to think about maybe mixed use isn't the best, but I think that is a requirement.
I do appreciate what staff's done to say standalone residential, standalone commercial, and also that footnote in there for the percentage of, of commercial on the, in the project on the first floor. Those are real good guidelines to keep us in balance, I'm thinking. So I think we're headed in the same direction you're saying here. So Councilmember DeCarly?
So Heather, does it, does it make it harder to go above four stories with the density bonus laws when it's at 30 units per acre than if we increase it to 45?
Does it make it easier to go above four stories with density bonus if we increase the density? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. If we increase the density to 45, is it easier to go above four stories with the density bonus laws?
Well, what I will say is the density bonus laws start with your maximum density, right? So if your maximum density is 45 and you have a qualifying project, is that not true? Maybe somebody better answer this.
No, it starts with the density you're proposing, not necessarily the maximum density that's being offered.
But if we, let's say somebody comes in and they have a project that's maximizing the density that we allow. So that's kind of what you're, maybe the concern is, is if we allow 45 units per acre, somebody kind of come in and, and ask for even more units than that, right? Through the state density bonus.
What, what would be the worst-case scenario for building height if we increase it to 45? And somebody takes full advantage of the density laws?
Well, there is no, there is, it's really hard to answer to, I mean, just in all honesty, there's so many.
But we should know, though, for making that decision.
But there's so many variables with state law.
We'd need to know more specifics for the project we're talking about because the calculations are very project-specific. So I don't know if we can answer that in a general way.
But there is not a specific, it's not like state density bonus says you can only add five feet or you can only, you know, it's, there's, there's just too many variables to be able to say.
Can we, can we say that, that state density bonus allows greater than what is code-written?
For, for a qualifying project.
We can concede the point that a proposal could come in, that because of claiming density bonus could be greater than the 45 and 45 and four stories.
Correct. It's not what we've seen. I mean, I think we had a pretty good discussion about this in April.
Where I'd like to go with this is since, we've discussed this a number of times. I mean, in a number of different types of forums over a bit of years. I'd like to get a sense of council whether that's something we want to address tonight or whether we're comfortable with the thing we have in our, in front of us already. And from this end, Councilmember Shribbs?
Okay, just a theoretical calculation here, just from under, one acre is 43,560 square feet. And if we're building units at even 1,000 square feet per unit, that's 43 units on a single floor and 86 units on two floors, and four floors would be 1,600. It's a huge number. So number-wise, on a theoretical basis, it really isn't going to matter a whole lot of 30 or 45. It's going to be the monetary structural of construction that's going to impact it and how many, and how small of units that you make.
You're comfortable with what we have here?
I think it's a mute point at this point. It comes down to the construction costs, not anything to do with size of units or number of, all the numbers we're talking about. It's mute compared to just absolute construction costs for everything. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it at all.
Thank you. Councilmember Quinn?
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, we've been at 30 units an acre for a long time, right? And for, and, and we've had zero housing built in the downtown area. And so, so if we want to keep zero housing built in the downtown area, then we should keep our zoning, you know, our, keep it where it's at today. And I, I think going from 30 acres, 30 units to 45 is a very modest increase, and we will be lucky if that gets us anything.
Thank you. Going from this side, anybody want to weigh in?
I feel exactly like Councilmember Quinn does.
I'm fine. So I think we've exhausted the conversation on it. I hear your point, but I think we're going to move. So are there other things we need to give staff feedback on in this regard? And not hearing that there were other issues, I'd like to move us into the River Park. One more, I'm sorry. Councilmember?
I'll go back to the original thing about the other end. So the larger properties that have industry now, because we've lost oyster shells, we've lost some, we may lose our cement factory, we've lost, we're just, we may lose our gravel, we've lost our quarry. So manufacturing, whether it be heavy or light, what the difference is. And I think we need to keep the door open for heavy industry because we have railway. So with railway and given 20 years from now, 30 years from now, possibilities are that we may need to be a little bit more creative in what we make here and what we use here and produce here to be more sustainable. So I'd like to keep the door open for wherever we have shipping access and railroad access. I think that the opportunity to keep it for heavy industry needs to be cleared. If we're going to do an EIR, that should still be an open door and checked out with EIR if we're going to do that. Otherwise, we may be shooting ourselves in the foot down the road here if we don't.
Yeah, I second that.
Are there any actionable effort on that?
So it is something we've looked at. So part of the existing conditions, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did take a more holistic, not, it's, this isn't just about housing, right? This is also about where are we projecting, commercial, industrial? And so I, you know, that's something I think we are all behind, we're supportive of. The general plan points to that. And then on top of that, we're providing that additional flexibility, you know, as we hear about hunting barons, et cetera, that, you know, we want to be mindful of preserving what is there now, but then also contending that there's some flexibility in the future. I will also add, on a separate, parallel track, this whole question about how we're supporting economic development is not just living in the general plan process, right? It's, it's the larger citywide, you know, you had a really great example about, like, bringing together ag businesses, roundtable, figure out what the needs are, figure out how we can help in the short term. Land use isn't killing our industrial, right? The changes that we're proposing here is not doing that, but we do need to have, and will continue to have, a good pulse on what our local businesses need so that we can retain but also grow and expand as they want to do so. So that's, there's multiple tracks that that's going to be accomplished.
Thank you.
Okay, that didn't quite answer the question as to light versus heavy industry. Where is that line drawn? And are we going to be preventing a certain amount of folks that might want to come here? And are we going to be preventing certain amount of folks that might want to come here to do something if we don't include it?
I think we're saying we're not modifying anything we have regarding light and heavy industry, and the battle will still be fought like the Dutra battle, where whether the public will tolerate something down the road.
So maybe I'll answer it a different way, Councilmember. So the land use itself is industrial, so that is not proposing to be changed. That will retain that flex, you know, will retain that. Where we will need to look at this a little bit more closely is in the zoning code, right? There's the light, there's the medium, there's the heavy. It's something we're, you know, looking at for local business now. So that's where if you're wanting to expand heavy industrial in more parts of town, that's our opportunity is to take a look at it in the zoning code.
Sure, okay. At that time, I thought, because you were saying earlier, we're not going to have heavy industry. I thought you said that statement earlier.
I don't think I said that, but.
Okay. I thought I caught that when you were talking about removing that as a category, that we would not have heavy industry. That'd be one of the things we're not going to have. So anyway, that's what I thought I heard earlier, sorry.
I think we're on to the River Park now, and I think given the hour, we can be more economical with words.
We'll keep this super simple. As you know, the area normally, formerly referred to as Scannell, recently acquired by the River Park Foundation. You've previously given us two types of direction. One was to, to the extent possible, accommodate the evolving plans of the foundation for the site. And secondly, ensure that the designations allow the opportunities presented to sites within a half mile of the smart station, particularly for housing. And so, what's on the screen now is the mix of designations we've been considering in simple terms for the smaller section that abuts Hopper, very close to the rail there, we're originally suggesting a downtown mixed use. And then for the remainder, the larger part of the site, the step-down mixed-use designation. More recently, if you go to the next slide, Heather, the foundation shared some draft concepts of varying degrees of intensity as kind of summarized in that second column in this chart, considering densities from thirty-three to fifty-three dwelling units per acre and heights up to six stories. And so it invited the general plan team to consider other options for what designations might be applied in different sections of the River Park Foundation site. And so what you have in the next three columns are the downtown mixed-use that we had originally considered, and this is focused specifically on that section adjacent to Hopper. Another option would be step-down mixed-use, and a third would be a town center mixed-use. All have different pros and cons as you move from left to right. You have similar maximum densities, but a higher allowed density for town center, similar FARs but slightly lower for step-down. And all at four stories, but with PC permission up to six for town center, which was why we're thinking that might be an option that would be consistent with the foundation's plans. And there's more detail on the slide that, as you saw, I believe in today's comments, if you can go to the next slide, they're now suggesting a different configuration, focusing the higher intensity or higher-density housing in that larger portion of the site. And so, what you have in the table to the left of the image is what would roughly be a corresponding designation to match that higher-density housing, the urban core mixed-use designation, because it would allow up to fifty units per, or excuse me, up to ninety-five units per acre and up to six stories, which is what they're requesting. It does not, however, allow standalone residential, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that's exactly what they're proposing or not. And it does have an active ground floor requirement. And the way it's currently written, that requirement relates to a street frontage, and there would not be a street frontage in this case, so there would be some limitations. We can discuss how we might maybe nuance the definition of active ground floor. In this case, maybe oriented towards another area of activity, like the park space there. But basically, we wanted to share with the council some options before it at this point, based on what we understand of foundation plans. I'm not, yeah, I'll just say this for myself, I think the direction you've given us is very clear and helpful so far. Try to accommodate the foundation's needs and allow for fairly dense housing within close proximity to the station. Clearly, their plans continue to evolve, and so I guess you have the option of providing us direction on what you think is preferable tonight, or allow us to run with the direction you've already given us and continue the conversation with the foundation and try to keep the designations for this site as consistent with those as possible.
Now we go to general public, or to public comment on this element. And our first speaker of UCI.
Hey, everybody, good evening. It's definitely past my bedtime, so I'm going to try and keep this short. And I know there's been quite a bit of conversation between the foundation and many of yourselves, as well as with staff, and first and foremost, just really want to thank you for the time. I have to comment that the first draft of the general plan didn't mention the River Park. And it's just really encouraging to see the partnership that's really grown between the city and the foundation on this monumental public amenity that's being brought to the city by the community, really. The land use designation that you see represented in our request at this time represents really that upper limit of what could be. There's been a lot of talk about flexibility tonight, opening doors. This is a plan that, or this land use designation will be in place for twenty-five years. And what the foundation is seeking just is that ultimate flexibility as we continue to explore, as the market continues to evolve, you know, what is possible on this site. I'll also share, though, that that is not the only motivation. The other motivation is to do, is to try to be in as much alignment with the city's goals around housing and the city's future as we can. Those values and goals that were shown at the very beginning of this meeting about preserving riparian corridors and open space and climate-friendly, affordable housing, and maximizing our opportunities for infill all feel so strongly in alignment with what we're trying to do on this site and this comprehensive park and neighborhood project. So, really appreciate everybody's support and look forward to hearing the discussion here tonight. Always here for questions. But just, you know, I'll share too that in our mad hustle to study all of the possibilities for this site, enough to come to bring this request to council tonight, we started to play around and imagine the neighborhood that could be there and how incredibly beautiful one, a thirty-five acre public park supported by this new climate-friendly, transit-oriented neighborhood. I mean, everyone I share the vision with just asked me where they can sign up to have one of the units. So I'll leave you with that, and thank you again so much for all your time and consideration, especially at this hour.
Thank you. And that closes public comment on the item, and that brings it back to council comment. Councilmember Barnacle?
I'll just reiterate, my one question is, where do I sign up? I, you know, we want to have this sort of thing, we want to have people doing, like bringing great development. They're working with a leading architect that, and it just, you know, when you actually look at the existing zoning, I looked at what it is, the existing height limit right now is seventy feet. So we allow like seventy-foot industrial things, but we don't allow seventy-foot buildings for people to live in. And that, like, that's what we're hemming and hawing about, I think, on this. And what we really want is, we want this park to be everything that they envision and that they've got, that they've got the community excited about. I certainly don't want to be the one that's taking away the stage or taking away the gray water system that's going to plant the, you know, water the plants. But that's exactly what we're doing if we're not creating that flexibility that Warren mentioned earlier. So that's my support.
Councilmember Shribbs?
Yeah, I was one of the folks, I had a one-on-one discussion looking at the plan and the opportunities. And so from a financial point of view, the park is going to need some income to make this happen, and so we're going to need development that's a little bit of higher density, a little bit higher volume in dollars to generate the monies needed to create the park, because we need money for that. However, there's two things, if we're doing an early EIR on this, are things we need to study. And that is basically, it's safety to the people that would be living there. Is there enough exit access in case of an earthquake? Is there going to be enough, like we've talked about the density of folks, because the number of people that we're going to put there now under this situation is going to be higher than what was originally presented to us a couple of times, twice before. So being a higher density of people in this area is, is there a safety factor here for that? Then, on the buildings themselves, there's something about the view shed, and I think we might be okay in that, but we'll have to get some agreement that, yes, sitting in the park looking up, is that changing the view shed for that particular area, changing anything? It might, it might not. I think that need to be looked at. So getting this included in that EIR might be very important at this time to see if it's even possible through our various regulations and ideas. So I'd like to test this out, give the opportunity to the park to move forward as best it can to make that a reality, because I think we're going to need it. But there's some caveats, we need to work caution in these two, a couple areas here, especially with the amount of, will we have enough water and electricity on that site coming in from the lines to cover all of that? So the utilities, is there enough utility capacity in that zone for that higher density? So I'd like that all checked out. But the opportunity is there, I think it needs to be checked out.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCarle?
This is sort of carryover from the last conversation, but also relates to this one as well. I kind of want to propose that we create a new land use designation that, you know, on the heels of flexibility, you know, incorporates keeping whatever the current zoning is, plus the ability for industrial along areas like the river and the railroad, so that, you know, we don't know what the future holds in twenty-five years, but, you know, if housing never does work out in any of those areas along the rail or the river, you know, you then still have this option of industrial, just making it more flexible for landowners. So, you know, in the case of the River Park, there's the parcel that's being carved out for housing. If that does or doesn't happen, what if we create a flexible zone that still allows for the housing, but at the same time could potentially be industrial again? It's just a combination of the two. And maybe industrial never happens, but we're not cutting that off from happening in those important transportation areas.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yeah, I think the park is a once-in-a, like, multi-generational opportunity. Like, this is an amenity that our city will benefit from that is like none other. And it, you know, comes with a promise to bring additional housing stock. And in an area where I don't think height is that much of an issue. And so I think it's, it's, we should do what we can to support the foundation to see it to fruition.
Thank you. Councilmember Cato Thompson?
I'm supporting what the foundation is asking for, and it's all going to be out in the EIR anyway, so we'll get all that information back and find out if there's utilities and everything else that's part of the EIR. And that's the direction I'd like to go.
Thank you. Can I ask staff, can you assess the difference between any of these proposals and total housing or anything? I mean, you know, what are we talking about excluding height? Not to worry about height, but total estimated units of housing between one proposal and another here that we're evaluating? Is it dramatic?
That's a calculation we could do, but we haven't come prepared with that calculation. You're really referring to the different allowable densities?
We're being asked to modify the prior proposal, you know, what was in the workbook prior to something new. What are we voting on? How much are we talking about?
Like, if, on the thirty acres, if we went from step-down mixed-use to urban core mixed-use at the maximum density range, is that kind of what you're talking about?
Would that be another hundred houses or another five hundred houses, or, I mean, how many houses are we talking here?
Well, step-down mixed-use to, let's say, urban core mixed-use is like double the density. So if you're talking, let's say, forty-five units an acre times, this feels like a dangerous calculation there.
Let me ask that, let me ask that another way. The proposal that we had and the proposal that we're seeing, they overlap in the density range. So you could have projects that are approximately the same density.
Correct, in different forms, and I think that's the thing. It seems to me like the allowing increased height is more the difference in this. In certain areas, you know, with that proposal that the foundation submitted just today or yesterday or something, it's, it seems less about the density range and more about the ability to pop up in.
So it could provide them less footprint and more shape and other ways to form a neighborhood?
Theoretically, more flexibility to design it.
The opportunity of flexibility.
The best way for the site.
So we've talked about a general plan EIR, but a project this magnitude, it would have its own EIR, right?
I mean, it depends. It could be, it could be a consistence, infill consistency under sequence.
Councilmember Shribbs makes a point I'm interested in, which is the mobility element. And what they pick will govern, you know, how, what mitigations in the mobility element. And what will we study in the EIR now before they have a proposed project?
Well, and don't forget that the EIR for the general plan is a programmatic EIR. So it is not looking at every site at a project-by-project level at that. But the, but the ideal result is you have enough analysis in your general plan EIR that you are creating some streamlining so that every project that comes in doesn't have to do their own EIR.
Right. There'd be a traffic study for local impact, but you've already kind of analyzed the regional or, you know, coming off property impact. And, you know, my same concern with the utilities and things, the water and power question. And, but those will get reassessed on a project basis at a later time, and the park will be liable for all of that, including off-site, all the off-site improvements, as well as onsite improvements, to bring them to the right sewer line, to bring them to the right water line. So I don't want to see us, I mean, I like being generous to, you know, fabulous amenity in the community, but I don't want to see us liable for the off-site improvement at another time. I think we need to, we want the development, but we don't want to subsidize it. So that's a concern I have. But I don't have a concern about changing, what we're proposing to change tonight, but just be aware of all the things we're getting into. And then lastly, this much housing will have a lot of affordable housing in it, but we don't really describe how the affordable housing works and how the inclusionary ordinance allows for an alternate compliance or, you know, all, all the other myriad of details that come up when a project gets complete. I wouldn't want us to portray us putting all the affordable in one place and not mixing it and having a mix on property like our inclusionary ordinance encourages. So those are just all things that we know, that will come about naturally as, after the general plan and as a project comes forward. But there's an awful lot, it's a really big project with a lot of complications.
But I think I saw a majority of the council direct to make changes to facilitate what the River Park is asking for on this parcel with land use designations.
Anybody have a problem with that statement? And I think that's an accurate statement, good assessment. And does that bring us to the conclusion of our meeting? This item is over and we are concluding tonight in, in memory of Earl D'Alzini and help me out, Janice.
Maureen Bettinelli.
Maureen Bettinelli. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.